Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's May 5th, 2011 meeting. And if you'd all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, veritable, just as a law.
We do have a quorum, and so we will proceed without objection to the agenda as it has been adopted and presented. First item on the agenda is a report of the Chairman, and I have one substantial thing to discuss, and that is, the National Capital Planning Commission plays a central role in the interagency security, with the interagency security committee, and we have an interagency security task force. And the task force met yesterday, May 3rd, or met on May 3rd, to discuss two things. One is the President's Park South Design Competition. That's the East Street just south of the White House where the visitor center is. And then second, an initiative on security in public spaces at the historic federal triangle nearby here from the Federal Trade Commission down to the Department of Commerce. First thing first, the President's Park South, the design competition. The goals are really three: to generate creative and thoughtful design concepts; second, to integrate durable and more aesthetic U.S. Secret Service security elements in that area of the White House grounds; and then third, to improve the experience of visitors as they are coming onto the White House. It's that area where the visitors' entrance is. Happily, there were 23 very highly qualified, very good submissions in the design competition. We have a selection committee that's chaired by NCPC's Bill Dowd, and they whittled it down to 15, which was very difficult. And even more difficult, they whittled it down and settled on five firms to advance to the next step, the next phase. And on Tuesday, the task force endorsed the five firms that have been recommended to proceed forward. The five firms are these: Hood Design Studio of San Francisco; second is Michael Van Balkenberg Associates in New York, New York City; third is Reed Hildebrand Landscape Architects of Watertown, Massachusetts; fourth is Rogers Marvel Architects out of New York City; and then fifth is Sasaki, also in Watertown, Massachusetts. These firms will develop, will next to develop, design concepts, and they'll be reviewed both by the public and by our task force, and that will happen at the end of June. The meeting, or task force meeting then began, the second part of our meeting, was to discuss the federal triangle security and public space initiative. And that initiative is in two phases. Phase one is there is a building-by-building security inventory being conducted, and we have about three more weeks of work to do on that. And that's being done per security criteria that has been developed over the last year, or about a year ago. And then second phase of the project is, will be led by the task force, will be to develop the recommendations for shared perimeter security elements and open space for the federal triangle. And those recommendations will come forward by year's end. And the next meeting of the task force will be at the end of June, and again, we'll be working on these two things. We will be looking at the next stage of the President's Park South, ranking the designs that'll be coming in from the five firms, and then we will continue work on the federal triangle piece. So that's a pretty significant undertaking, and appreciate very much Bill Dowd for his work on this. That ends the Chairman's report, and I'll turn it over to Marcel Acosta, Executive Director, for the Agenda Item Number Two, which is his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, there are two items, two upcoming public events that might be of interest to the general public. On Thursday, May 19th, the Commission and the D.C. Office of Planning is holding a joint public meeting on the NCPC Southwest Eco-District Initiative, as well as the Office of Planning's Maryland Avenue Southwest Small Area Plan. At the follow-up meeting, we'll cover findings from the recently completed market study, seek public input on preliminary revitalization opportunities along 10th Street and Maryland Avenue Southwest, and also view ideas on how the combined Southwest Study area can become a more sustainable and livable neighborhood. And this will be held at the D.C. Office of Planning offices down on the Southwest side. Second, we are holding a, on June 7th, NCPC, the D.C. Chapter of the American Institute of Architects will co-host Contemporary Design Historic City: The Balancing Act Between Preservation and Innovation. This public panel discussion will explore how Washington can preserve its architectural heritage and welcome new innovative design into its urban fabric. The event will take place at Catholic University School of Architecture and Planning, and details on this event will be on our website. I'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce a new staff member, Jennifer Hirsch. Jennifer is serving as our new Preservation Officer. She joined our staff in mid-April and was most recently with FEMA's Office of Environmental Planning and Historic Preservation, where she worked on NEPA compliance and Section 106 review for public projects funded by the grant program directorate. Prior to her work with FEMA, Jennifer was a preservation planner with the city of San Diego and the staff to the city's Historic Resources Board. Jennifer has a BA from Brown University, and a Master's of City Planning, and a Master of Science in Historic Preservation from the University of Pennsylvania. So, welcome, Jennifer. Also, and finally, today's Commission meeting is actually being streamed live on the website, on the NCPC website. And with that, this marks our, the inauguration of our outreach to the general public, so they could view the Commission meetings as they take place on our website. With that, I'd like to introduce Christian Madera from our Office of Public Affairs, who will also discuss our recent outreach activities, as well as what we're doing with our website in terms of this new live streaming initiative. I'd also note that Christian was named as Planetisens, one of top 25 leading thinkers in urban planning and technology recently, so welcome, Christian.
Thank you, Marcel. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm just going to take a quick moment to give you an update on NCPC's current outreach activities, talk a little bit about where we're headed, and also touch on what we're doing to ensure that when it comes to public outreach, the agency is getting a good return on its investment. To start, I think I have some slides. Oh, there they are. To start, I think it's helpful to talk about why we do outreach. For us, there's three main goals. One, we want to educate the public about the agency and its function. Second, we want to engage the public in our work and solicit input into the planning and review processes. And third, we want to help the agency get recognized as an authority in the community on pertinent planning and development issues. In addition, there are several external factors, like the Obama Administration's Open Government Initiative and the recently passed Plain Writing Act, which are pushing federal agencies to share more information with the public in ways that are easy to consume and understand. So, what does NCPC do when it comes to outreach? We do a number of things. I think many of you already be familiar with these. We hold regular public events, including our Commission meetings, public meetings and workshops related to planning initiatives, and our speaker series. Beyond events, our website and email communications have been the primary way that the agency now sends out information to the public. Over the past couple of years, we've been augmenting our website with videos and social media tools like Facebook and YouTube, and of course, we can't forget printed publications like our annual report and traditional media tools such as press releases. To give you a quick summary of the results of all this, we've had over 1,250 people attend our events in 2010. Our email list has grown to 1,600 subscribers, up from about 700 at the start of 2010. We average about two to three mentions in the news media each week, and we've produced over 50 videos that have been viewed online collectively over 2,000 times. Moving forward, there's a number of things we want to do to further engage the public. As Marcel mentioned, we are now starting today providing a live video feed of Commission meetings over the web, and we'll be doing this with our other public events where possible. We hope this expands the audience for our meetings and events, and lets people who might otherwise not be able to attend in person know what's going on firsthand. Furthermore, the Commission meeting will be archived online, and we'll soon be including links from the Commission action text on our website to the relevant sections of an archived video that allows the public to see the Commission's deliberation around each action. Also related to enhancing the public awareness of Commission meetings is our effort to publish submission materials online for projects under review prior to Commission meeting dates. NCPC has also started using Twitter. This is a rapidly growing social media platform that makes use of short messages of only 140 characters. Twitter's being utilized by many government agencies such as EPA, DOT Secretary Ray LaHood, and of course, President Obama himself. NCPC's official Twitter presence is going to help the agency communicate to a more savvy growing audience, and provides a valuable complement to some of our other new outreach strategies. For example, citizens interested in a particular action on the Commission's agenda can monitor the agency's Twitter feed in real time, and then jump over to our live video feed to watch the pertinent discussion. In the future, we're hoping to explore how other social media tools might fit into our outreach efforts. Deployed appropriately, we think that these can further help increase public awareness and participation. Of course, it doesn't make sense to do any of these things if they don't really provide measurable results for the agency. So as we continue trying these new methods of communication, we're also working to develop a comprehensive strategy to evaluate our success when it comes to outreach. This involves collecting better data about the actual reach of our various communication channels, analyzing outcomes, for example, if people actually decide to participate in an event, or comment on a proposal based on our messaging, and then also look at cost effectiveness. We hope by the end of the year, we'll have a lot better idea about what's working well, what doesn't work, and what we might want to try differently. With that, I'd like to thank the Commission for its time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Members of the staff, members of the Commission, questions? Thank you very much. We do have a terrific staff, who is Public Affairs staff. We're very blessed. I guess I'll have to get a Twitter account now. Mr. Proventia, do you tweet?
I do have one recommendation, that they take the Chairman's better side in the future.
Touche. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. There are five items on the Consent Calendar. I'm sorry, I've jumped ahead, excuse me. Next item is Agenda Item Three, which is a legislative update. Ms. Skylar.
I thought I was going to get out from under. I actually have nothing to report.
Indeed, thank you. Now, Agenda Item Number Four is the Consent Calendar. We have five items on the Consent Calendar. We're going to do two separate votes on the Consent Calendar, as Mr. May has recused himself from participating in Items 4A and 4B, because they will come before the zoning commission on which he serves. And so let's do those two votes first, 4A and 4B, together. 4A is the draft VNS campus plan for the University District of Columbia. And Item 4B is the Student Center for the University District of Columbia. Are there any questions or comments from Commission members on 4A and 4B? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve 4A and 4B? It's been moved and seconded, that 4A and 4B be approved. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Those items are approved. The other three items on the Consent Calendar are 4C, which is the District of Columbia Water and Sewer Authority Clean Rivers Project, Anacostia Park; 4D is the new Dunbar Senior High School; and 4E is the first stage and consolidated planned unit development and related amendment to the zoning map for the air rights above the Center Leg Freeway. Questions or comments on those three items? Mr. May?
I just want to comment on the Clean Rivers Project. This isn't a park service project, but the work that's happening here will happen, or at least the surface appearance of this work will happen on the parkland. And it is such a big and important project, and I think this is an important moment that it's moving forward with the construction of this replacement of the combined sewer outfall. And this is actually an access point for the Anacostia Tunnel, and it's going to be a very, very big project, and this is going to be a construction site for actually a long, long time. I think more than 10 years.
Wow. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to, on 4C, 4D, and 4E? It's been moved and it's been seconded. All in favor of 4C, 4D, and 4E, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. And moving on to the action items individually. Agenda Item Number 5A is the draft master plan for the Nebraska Avenue Complex, known as the NAC. And we have Ms. Kelly.
Good afternoon. Before you today is the draft master plan for the Nebraska Avenue Complex, submitted by the General Services Administration for your comment. The Nebraska Avenue Complex, which I will refer to as the NAC, is located in northwest Washington, DC, and currently houses components of the Department of Homeland Security. Many of these components will be relocating to St. Elizabeth's, once that is ready for them. However, DHS has done a study that looks at their locations throughout the national capital region, and with a goal to consolidate 40 of the locations down to seven to 10 locations. And the NAC is an important component of that consolidation, due to its size, as well as its ability to reach a Level 5 security criteria. The NAC is, excuse me. The NAC is located at Nebraska Avenue and Massachusetts Avenue at Ward Circle. Across from the NAC is American University, and actually, AU owns three sides around Ward Circle. So you have the Katzen Art Center, as well as the bulk of the AU campus, and then a surface parking lot directly across from the NAC. The AU is currently undergoing a master, or excuse me, a campus plan update, which will look at development at AU, also development in the parking lot that is across from the NAC. Next to AU, south of the NAC, is residential area, as well as there is a high-rise residential directly south of the NAC. To the east is Glover Archibald Park, which is a National Park Service park. And then you have an NBC Studios, as well as a church institution. And across the way is the Swedish Ambassador's Residence. .75 miles north of the NAC is Tenley Town and the Tenley Town Metro Station. And you can see here, the distance from the metro, the first ring is a half a mile, and the second ring is a mile distance. Here is the existing conditions of the site. It's about 30 buildings that equivocate to approximately 653,000 square feet of office space, and houses 2,400 employees. You can see the bulk of the campus is towards Nebraska Avenue, with a few scattering of buildings in the back of the campus. There are two large surface parking lots that accommodate most of the parking for the NAC. However, there is parking within the secure perimeter off of access roads in the NAC. The NAC site has a rich history, and GSA is currently undergoing a nomination to make this a historic district on the National Register. And GSA has determined that there's two areas of significance at the NAC. The first being when the site was the Mount Vernon Seminary for Girls, which was the first non-secretarian school for girls in the district. And you can see here, the proposed potential contributing buildings during this period of significance at the NAC, and it includes Building 1, which is the main building, as well as the Gatsby House and a few other buildings. The second period of significance was when the Navy moved to the site during World War II, and moved their communications annex there. And this is where they worked to break the code of the Japanese during World War II. And you can see the potential contributing buildings during that significant period. You can just see how, in these areas, how the site has changed through the years, from when it was the school to what it is today. And the historic context or integrity of the site has severely diminished through the years due to infrastructure improvements and operations at the NAC. And one of the major intents of the master plan is to restore this historic character to the campus. So you can see here, the proposed renovation of historic buildings. And GSA has also determined approximately 16 buildings that will be demolished as part of this master plan. And with that demolish of buildings, that allows opportunity for the location of development in the future. And you can see here, in the proposed master plan, the developable areas, the master plan proposes six new buildings, two in the front of the campus that respect the setback established by the historic buildings on campus. The bulk of the buildings will be located in the back of the house with four new buildings, as well as a new parking structure, which will consolidate the parking on site into a four-level parking structure, two above grade and two below grade. They'll also have a green roof. Here you can see the comparison between the existing conditions and the proposed master plan conditions. The master plan proposes to build 1.2 million square feet of office space at the NAC, but you can see that almost half of that is the retention of the historic buildings, approximately 500,000 square feet. And it's interesting to note that while the development on the NAC is increasing, that the amount of impervious surface at the NAC is actually decreasing, and this is due to the consolidation of parking and the use of impervious pavers and such. The number of people at the NAC is increasing approximately 1,800. However, the amount of parking on the site will actually decrease, and this is due to the fact that currently, the NAC does not meet the 1 to 4 parking ratio for employees at the NAC. Just to note that this 1150 number was submitted in the draft master plan, but GSA is currently evaluating the number of parking spaces needed for visitors at the site. So this number may change, however, the amount of parking for employees will remain consistent with the 1 to 4 parking ratio. Staff has evaluated the draft master plan, and as well as has been involved in the master plan process, and the environmental impact statement process. And ultimately, the Executive Director is recommending favorably on this master plan. It is the alternative carried forth here is the best alternative that was evaluated in the EIS, and I will just go through a few of the positive elements of the master plan. Firstly, the master plan proposes to develop the Ward Circle with a signature building. And you can see here, the existing views from Massachusetts into the area where the building would be located. And you can also see some of the other buildings that AU has along Ward Circle. Now, the master plan and GSA acknowledge that this needs to be, quote, "a signature building" due to its location at Ward Circle, and that the architecture for the building will have high quality. Second, the master plan proposes to consolidate, as I said, into one parking structure. This decreases the amount of impervious surface on the site, as well as removes parking from the internal circulation of the campus, giving it more of a pedestrian feel. The draft master plan also lays out multiple sustainable goals to meet federal laws, as well as executive orders, as well as GSA's policy that new buildings will meet at a minimum of LEED gold certification. You can see here, the proposed general stormwater concept for the draft master plan. Currently, there is little stormwater management at the site, and the site slopes down to the park, so a lot of the stormwater flows into the park. But the new development will comply with D.C. regulations, as well as ESA 438. And you can see that, that they have multiple green roofs, as well as pervious pavement, and the use of underground and retention storage facilities. As well as, as I noted before, it will restore many of the historic buildings on the campus. As well as, the new buildings in the back of the house will respect the height limit set by the Building 1, the main building on the campus. So therefore, the new buildings will not overshadow the historic buildings, and views from Nebraska Avenue of the new buildings will be limited. Staff notes that this is a draft master plan, and GSA is continuing to evolve to the final master plan. And as such, the Executive Director has some recommendations as GSA moves forward. And in lieu of reading the recommendations at the end of the presentation, I will be walking you through them in the next couple of slides. Here you can see the proposed access points for the NAC. The main access points will be off of Nebraska Avenue. This will have pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular, truck, and bus access. And then there's also an access off of Nebraska Avenue, where this is bicycle and secure and pedestrian access, as well as the bus access. The Executive Director is recommending that GSA evaluate the pedestrian bicycle access to the site, specifically north on Nebraska Avenue. As this, from this edge of the property down to the proposed access point is over 600 feet long, there may be an opportunity to have an access point more north closer to the metro station. As well as, the Executive Director is recommending that GSA continue to work with DDOT on the proposed access points for all of the NAC, to evaluate the best options moving forward, perhaps having the ability for visitors and vehicular access off of Nebraska Avenue to relieve pressures off of Massachusetts Avenue. Here you can see the proposed security for the NAC. It will meet a Level 5 criteria, meaning that it will have a 100-foot setback from the fence line to a building edge, as well as there will be a double fence line around the NAC. And the Executive Director is recommending that GSA evaluate the need for a Level 5 security requirement here, specifically the need for a double fence along Nebraska Avenue and Ward Circle, due to its negative views from the public realm. Also, the lowering of the security level might allow for additional access points off of Nebraska Avenue. Here you can just see some general landscape elements that are proposed in the master plan. The master plan sets out general guidelines for landscaping throughout the campus. However, the Executive Director is recommending that GSA specifically set guidelines for the areas viewed from public space, specifically Ward Circle and Nebraska Avenue, as these are highly visible areas. As well as, you can note here, the Gatsby House, which is still owned by the Department of the Navy and is used as flag officer quarters. The Executive Director is recommending that GSA work with the Department of Navy, so that the landscape plan for this area and the security plan for this area are, work, are, seem as one entity, as it was historically. As well as, staff supports the district's goal to increase the tree canopy throughout the whole district, and we just encourage GSA to evaluate if there's an opportunity to increase the tree canopy even more at the NAC. Here you can see the proposed modal splits that was developed in the draft Transportation Management Plan. Prior to this, the NAC has never had a transportation management plan, and you can see here, the changes from the amount of parking on now to a 1 to 4 parking ratio. However, I would like to note that this modal split was done using DHS Y survey data, and DHS has agreed to do a NAC-specific survey to ensure that this modal split is correct, and they're currently undergoing this now.
Given that they're going from a, going to a 1 to 4 parking ratio, a robust TMP will
Sorry for the technical difficulty. A robust TMP will be needed for the site, and the Executive Director is recommending that DHS and GSA continue to work with DDOT and DCOPE on the proposed modal splits and the strategies in the TMP. Also, the DCOPE has noted that with an increase of 1,800 people at the NAC, there will be little economic benefit to the surrounding area. And we encourage GSA to work with And we encourage GSA to work with DCOOP on potential economic benefit or development programs here at the NAC. Lastly, here you can see the proposed phasing under the master plan, as well as there will be renovating the historic buildings. And the executive director is recommending that GSA include a phasing plan as part of the master plan. The phasing plan should also evaluate to ensure that the parking ratio will be met at each development phase and should be correlated with the transportation management With that, it's the executive director's recommendation that the commission comment favorably on the master plan and recommends that in the continued development, GSA evaluate the information that I had presented to you in the previous slides. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. We have representatives from DHS and GSA here if you have questions for them.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Before we take the matter to us, we have two members of the public who wish to comment, and I think it'd be good to get their comments first before, so that we have benefit of them during our discussion. First, we have Ms. Ann Huer of the Advisory Neighborhood Commission 3D, and second, Mr. David Furman of the Westover Homes Corporation. Each of these, both of these are representing an organization, so you will have five minutes. And there's a clock on the wall that'll show you, kind of countdown. And we welcome you. Welcome, Ms. Huer.
Good afternoon. I thank you for this opportunity to make comments about the draft master plan. ANC 3D, at its regularly scheduled meeting on February 2nd, reviewed the draft EIS and approved by a vote of 9-0 a resolution outlining a series of objections to future plans for the 37-acre site. We represent neighborhoods directly impacted by the proposal. Although NAC site itself does not fall within our boundaries, we represent neighborhoods complete directly across the street and along the commuter routes to the NAC site. In fact, most commuters accessing the site will have to first drive through ANC 3D to reach NAC. The level of growth anticipated by GSA in all three options outlined, including Alternative B, is so intense that it will add to traffic congestion, especially given the lack of any new and/or effective traffic mitigation strategies, compromise pedestrian safety, and alter and destabilize residential neighborhoods surrounding that. We support no action or as little as possible. In fact, we urge GSA to consider other locations. As you're putting 750,000 new growth square feet, six new buildings, and 4,200 seats, nearly doubling the number of federal employees and contractors using the site, we feel that this is most inappropriate in a residential neighborhood. In its resolution, ANC 3D noted that the traffic study completed by GSA as part of the draft EIS was inadequate and perhaps flawed. ANC 3D noted that the traffic study included no data collections for streets in our neighborhoods, such as Fox Hall Road, Luffborough, Arizona Avenue. And these are the main commuter routes to NAC from suburban Virginia, where more than half of DHS employees live. We noted that the contradiction in the study conclusion that the proposed expansion would have no impact on traffic or pedestrian safety, while also acknowledging that even no action would lead to failed or deteriorated levels of service. We would like to note that a traffic study of the Ward Circle area completed recently by AU raises additional questions of whether the GSA traffic study is flawed. We, ANC 3D, retained the services of Nelson Nygaard, which is a highly respected transportation for, planning firm to assist in our review. And based on their review, we are advised that both GSA and AU studies relied on the same data for streets near NAC, but reached fundamentally different conclusions. Given that AU has proposed a significant expansion over the next 10 years in the same corridor, we consider it critical that no action be taken on this master plan until the DC zoning commission has considered and resolved the issues around the AU expansion later this year. We would also like to oppose, well, we strongly object to plans for expanded use of the Massachusetts Avenue entrance to access the site, which already is experiencing a failed level of service. The failure to propose meaningful traffic mitigation is particularly significant since DDOT is on record in a letter to GSA that there are no programmed transportation improvements for the area. And lastly, we are concerned that GSA may not be planning for adequate parking at the site. Our concern is for parking spillover in the neighborhood, a current problem experienced by DHS's residential neighbors. We believe that any expansion should include a plan that addresses DHS employee or contractor parking on residential streets. The full resolution approved by the ANC is attached to this testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huer, very much. And you will be followed by David Furman of the Westover Homes, the Westover Place Homeowners Association. Mr. Furman, welcome.
Excuse me. Good afternoon. My name is David Furman. I am the director and treasurer of the Westover Place Homeowners Corporation, and our 149-unit townhome community is located almost directly across the street, that is Massachusetts Avenue, from the entrance drive into the current facility. Daily, the owners of these townhomes endure the strain placed on our neighborhood, parking and transportation infrastructures due to the increasing operations of the Department of Homeland Security. The development of this plan will infringe on the neighborhoods in an even larger way, and we do not believe that the plan adequately creates mitigating circumstances in which the, that it can be addressed. The Westover homeowners are already negatively impacted. Since the terrorist activities of 9/11, employment has grown dramatically at the site. It has outpaced the available parking and has forced private contractor parking off-site and into the neighborhoods. At Westover Place, my community, we have added guard service to turn away these government contractors and employees from parking on our private property to protect it. That currently costs us $300 a year per homeowner, and it's fearful that if this plan is enacted, which greatly increases employment and reduces parking at the same time, that we'll be forced to go to 24-hour guard service to protect our private property at a cost of $1,500 a year per homeowner. The current operation already places strains on the neighborhood's streets, as the ANC has testified, and we fully endorse the resolution of the ANC. The recently proposed master plan for the site indicates that over half of the employees come from Northern Virginia. It is anticipated that this trend will continue even as they expand. The existing public transportation is incapable of handling this proposed growth, and the master plan does not adequately address the transportation arteries that come from Northern Virginia, namely Fox Hall, Nebraska, MacArthur, Reservoir, Canal, Arizona, and Luffborough Roads. All of these roads are currently saturated during peak travel times and will only get worse. None of this has been addressed in the plan. The Westover Place homeowners does not trust that the federal government be able to effectively mitigate the traffic and parking problems through the voluntary means as they increase employment and reduce the number of onsite parking spaces. It would seem logical to consider alternate locations, perhaps closer to the employee base, that would not impose upon this residentially zoned neighborhood. Despite the General Service Administration and the Department of Homeland Security's desire to grow at the Nebraska Avenue complex site, there are other options. First, a decision could be made to maintain the status quo and hold employment levels at current level. This no-action alternative would not affect the neighborhoods any worse than the current levels. Second, alternatives A, B, and C could be implemented with modifications to the access points, increasing the parking strategy and staggering work shifts to spread out the traffic burden. Third, there could be an investment in federal dollars into the area DC road improvement projects, including Ward Circle, to reduce the impact that the greatly increased employment projection will produce. I might also mention that there is a lack of commercial parking in this area. There are no commercial parking garages to absorb the overflow immediately adjacent to this site. Fourth, the Department of Homeland Security's most desired plan, Alternate B, would, could, and should include backup alternatives should the suggested transportation mitigations not have the desired effects. It's entirely possible that GSA's projections are wrong and that parking needs will actually increase. The DHS preferred plan is to increase the seats from 2,390 to 4,100, a 76% increase in seats, and reduce parking spaces at the same time by 7%. I just cannot believe that carpooling and shuttle buses from Virginia are going to solve that problem, and I expect that the overflow parking is going to come into our neighborhoods. Finally, it could be determined that the Nebraska Avenue complex site, because of its location in a residentially zoned and fully established neighborhood, is not appropriate, and an alternate site for some or all of this massive growth could be found elsewhere.
You can finish your remarks.
All right. Thanks very much. I have just one more paragraph.
Yes, sir.
My intention today is to alert you to the existing conditions that already affect the neighborhood surrounding the Nebraska Avenue complex, and that there is a fear that this impact will only get worse. And also to make sure that you understand that there are other options available to GSA and DHS that could decrease the neighborhood impact. I assure you that there are plenty of other options to consider beyond the five suggestions which I put forth today, and I urge you to take these into consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Furman, very much. This ends the public comment period, and we'll return the discussion to the commission. Do we have questions for Ms. Kelly? I had one. The transportation master plan goals should be achieved over what period of time?
Well, it will be dependent on the phasing plan as to when they will achieve it.
Okay. I'm with you. Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Denton?
Ms. Kelly, the EDR calls for continued coordination on the modal split. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes. As I showed in the presentation, the modal split that was analyzed in the chart, I can put it back up.
It's page 23 of your EDR.
These were developed using data that was collected DHS-wide. It's not site-specific. So they are currently doing a survey, and they're working with DDOT on the survey questions and the results of the surveys to determine what this existing modal split is, and then how to address the current, the goal of the modal split. DDOT and DCOOP thought that some of the modal splits did not correctly represent what is out there today or what should be out there in the future, and they're just, they're working on getting the information so that they can change these modal splits.
Yeah. For Metro Rail, existing percentage, I see, is 30%, and the goal is 38%. How do you get from one to the other?
Well, they would have to offer programs such as shuttle buses and incentives.
Incentives? Okay. And we're working with them on that? Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Stongasser, and then Mr. Hart.
Ms. Kelly, what is the next step if we, if we vote to approve this draft master plan? Somewhere in here, I noticed it said that the plan is 35% done. I mean, I completely sympathize with Ms. Howard and Mr. Furman about the impacts of this site's development and the, in combination with the impacts of what's happening on AU. My concern is if we move forward with, with, you know, efforts to coordinate and evaluate potentials, and we don't really have the full modal split, and we don't really have a phasing plan, that transportation's going to drive the development as opposed to the development responding. And if we approve this, what is the next stage? What will happen next with DHS?
Well, they're, they're going to have to, they're currently evaluating the comments for the draft EIS, and they're going to take the commission's comments into consideration as they're doing that as well. So there may be changes to the EIS as they move forward, but they'll also continue to work with DDOT. They have set up a community group that will look at transportation impacts in the, in the community, and that was set up through Commissioner Norton's office, I'm sorry. And they will continue to look at that. They're just still evaluating all the concerns.
So the next thing that will come back to us will be the proposed master plan?
Correct.
I just got to say to the other commission, I'm really uncomfortable moving forward on a draft plan with so much uncertainty, and especially with this tran, with the transportation management plan being incomplete and the phasing plan being unprovided.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah. I just wanted to confirm that what we're seeing here is not representative of the site under consideration. This is a survey of DHS employees within the metropolitan area. So the drive-alone SOV, existing percentage is going to be closer to 50% based on current parking provided against the employees.
It could be.
Has there been an existing split done for this site?
This site has never had a TMP.
Thank you.
Mr. Proventia.
Couple of questions. Appreciate the thorough analysis by the staff and Ms. Kelly. Is there any affiliation between the folks that are already at the NAC and American University? Was that at all a factor in determining that DHS not only needed to stay at that location, but also grow immediately adjacent to AU? Is there any academic research affiliation of any kind with the university?
The current components at the NAC will be relocating to DHS. I don't believe there is a correlation between the two groups.
Okay. What about, has there been consideration of the view yet, particularly, what's the, what's the name? I may have missed it. The name of the high-rise complex that's on Massachusetts?
I don't know the name of that.
It appears that just the, at least the conceptual placement of the new facilities at the NAC would put the parking structure immediately adjacent to that high-rise as opposed to, say, a more attractive building to look at every day out your back window. Would that also partially obscure the, the view of Glover Archbald Park from the, from the high-rise?
It's going to be four levels, two underground, so two above ground, but they, they did supply a green roof on top.
Green roof. Yeah. That's good, good mitigation. And the driver for the security Level Five is at the current security level of the 2,300, 2,400 folks that are already at the, at the NAC?
That is the current.
So it's not, not a higher level than currently exists?
Correct.
Okay. And is that driven, I would assume, by combination of perhaps the, the security levels, the missions that are currently there, which are probably are very sensitive, as well as the, the visual and the perhaps electronic surveillance capabilities that are provided by a combination of the embassy, the NBC station, and the high-rise apartments? Is that, those things kind of combine, the existing requirements, security requirements, as well as the opportunities for electronic and visual surveillance? Pedestrian access. It appeared that the closest possible pedestrian access to the Tinley Metro was on Massachusetts. Is that the, there was something like a three-quarter of a mile travel distance? I think it was on slide 14. Is it, is it 3.75 miles from here to the metro? Is it from, from which point in the site?
It would be north on Nebraska Avenue, and there is an access point here on Nebraska Avenue.
What about shuttle service either along Nebraska or along Massachusetts? Does DHS currently have something in place, or would they put something in place to mitigate the?
They currently have an extensive shuttle bus service.
Okay. I've been to that site recently and had a function at Katson, so I'm a little bit familiar with the, with the area. Okay. Shuttle services, we talked about that. Oh, the, the net increase, around 2,400 folks now going to 42. The increase is 1,700, 1,800 folks. Less than half of those folks will Less than half of those folks would drive, so I'm just trying to figure out what the net increase would be. Is that, is that a fair assessment? They were only adding maybe 700 or so?
It should actually be less than what is driving there today because of the parking ratio of one to four.
Right.
So, only a fourth of the employees that will be proposed there can drive there in the future.
So, it'll be less traffic and less parking in the future as there is currently. Okay, that seems to.
Could I clarify?
In the right direction.
We don't actually know how many people drive to this campus now. That's correct. This survey is regional, not site-specific.
No, they have the number of parking spaces that are allowed at the NAC, and they know the utilization.
Well, they know the people that are parking on the NAC, but they don't know how many employees are driving to the site, and that they're, anybody who's been up there in the daytime knows that the on-street parking is as big a mess as the onsite parking. And so, I think, I guess that gets to my issue of concern over having, having a more solid understanding of what's really going to happen through the TMP, through the phasing, through the survey, and when that's going to come. To be 35 percent done with a master plan and not have an understanding of how many people are really coming and what the transportation management plan is going to be, just seems cart before the horse, and I find it very, very discomforting. I don't think I'm going to be able to vote for the current EDR.
Chair, I just wanted to know about, obviously, probably all of us are concerned about the parking. To the speakers from the community, I wonder whether or not, and to the staff direct, whether or not residential parking and this is a good neighbors policy that American University employs now, which got, I've been advised media attention recently. Is that type of thing going to be, has that been, I mean, what kind of efforts are we making or have been made to try to do something to mitigate other than doing more homework and being prepared to go forward? I'm not sure we're there yet, but anything been done to try to mitigate the residential parking, good neighbors, that type of thing?
DHS has heard the community's concern, and they're not only going to do a TMP just for the master plan, but current entities that are on the NAC now. So, there will be a master, a TMP in place for what is going on at the NAC currently.
Well, I was moving a little bit fast. I think that's the question that's been asked. Can we, what is, what will be the impact of the timetable if we were to get more information about parking before we go forward on the government, on, on the homeland security, et cetera, et cetera?
Are you asking, does the team, or the master plan need to be approved today? Is that what you're?
No, I'm saying if we were to do something, what will be the impact to slow it down if we didn't move it today? What would, what would slowing it down mean to the government, to the process?
I think that would be up for GSA.
Yeah, I was going to call on someone from DHS or NAC at some point.
My name is Scott Battles with General Services Administration, and we do have some staff members here that can address some of these questions that you're asking in probably a little bit more detail. I want to introduce Jim Clark, which is with MTA Architects, and he's our consultant that's providing most of the evaluation for the master plan development. We could certainly approach and ask or answer some of the questions that you have right now, reference to the TMP, what's happening right now in transportation. Jim can probably answer some more particular questions, and we do have other staff members here that can address some of the other questions that you may have.
I think it's also important to remember, though, this is a draft master plan.
Exactly.
So, the next step will be a proposed master plan. It hardly gets us set in stone. In fact, we were, we were advised to come in at this point for sort of a checkup from the neck up, but it is a draft. It's been long in the making, and I don't know. Can you speak to the schedule, Scott, in terms of delay, if there were deferred decision?
Well, right, right now with the master plan, we would be projecting out the master plan to be complete sometime November of 2012. That's considering that we just proceed on now as projected, completing the EIS process and completing the master planning process and going through all the additional things that Cheryl had talked about, the additional traffic surveys, the studies, you know, kind of improving and addressing the TMP issues, but taking us all the way to probably the November of 2012. That would be the master plan sequence of events, and after that, of course, it just depends on a lot of variables of funding and how we actually execute any master plan that would come out of that.
Well, Mr. Chair, I guess my, and I'm not, but I think this, I appreciate the answer. And since you're here, the head, with neck, what was that you used, the term you used? Head to toe, neck to?
Checkup from the neck up.
Checkup from the neck up. Well, I guess we, you're going to probably maybe hear some negative votes here, maybe not enough to stop it, but I think we're giving you some signals that we're concerned about parking, as we all are in the neighborhood. So, I don't know where it will go from here, but the checkup from the neck up may be what we're saying.
We had heard from the public and, and different venues, and that has definitely been something that we've been focusing on, trying to improve and make the TMP more robust, which is something that we've heard the community as far as what's happening right now, whether we do nothing, there's a, there may be an issue with parking in the neighborhood. So, that is something we're addressing right now. Cheryl mentioned that with Representative Norton's office, that's something that's happening parallel with the master plan. So, we're also doing the master plan development and the TMP for the future condition.
In other words, the residential parking and the good, good neighbor, good policy, all those would be factors that may be useful and considered in the process.
Yes.
All right, fine. I think this is very interesting because we're going to be facing east of the river at some point, same kind of concerns, I guess, but we know that. Thank you.
Yeah, let me reiterate what Ms. Wright said, that we are where we should be at this time. This is a draft for public comment. We still have the preliminary submittal to go, at which there will be additional opportunity for public comment and revision, and then there will be the final submission at which there will be opportunity for more public comment. So, we are very early in the process, and so we are where we should be.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, draft, master plans normally come in just for final.
Oh, just for final, excuse me. So, still, my point is, we are where we need to be. Lots of, lots of time for public comment and consideration and revision. Mr. May, did you have?
Yeah. I just had one parking-related question, and Commissioner Dixon alluded to it, but the residential parking, is the, are the surrounding neighborhoods actually subject to the residential parking permit program? Are they all controlled, controlled streets? No one knows on the staff? I mean, can we, yes, please, maybe from, you need to come to the microphone, I think, if you're going to speak.
There is some metered parking on Nebraska Avenue and Massachusetts Avenue, but the majority of the neighborhood is RPP, the residential parking.
Majority of the neighborhood is RPP-controlled. So, in theory, if there were good enforcement, then there wouldn't be people parking all day and going to work.
And in fact, when we met with Congresswoman Norton, that was an issue that she raised.
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Suzanne Hill with GSA. When we met with Congresswoman Norton's office, that was one of the issues that she raised, is there ways that we can maybe look at the metered parking and have that switched over to residential parking permitting to alleviate some of these issues? And in fact, our meeting tomorrow with Congresswoman Norton's office is with Department of Public Works, MPD, Metropolitan Police District, DCOP, and D-DOT are also going to be there. So, we have quite a big working session tomorrow at Congresswoman Norton's office to address a lot of these issues.
Okay. You know, in future stages, if one of the issues that we're going to be concerned about is spillover parking, I think it might be helpful to actually have some, some study of what the parking situation is in proximity to the, this complex, because it, you know, sometimes it really is a problem at certain times of the day. It may not be at others. It may be in a particular area, but not when you get a couple of blocks away. It's, you know, it's, you know, residential parking where I live is always an issue because it's, there's a lot of, of density of houses and cars, but you can usually find a parking space within a block or so. But there are other neighborhoods in the city where, you know, it's, or even other parts of my neighborhood where it's a much bigger problem. So, it's, I think it varies quite a lot, and understanding that, how bad and bad that problem is, I think, might be helpful. I have other comments not having to do with parking, believe it or not, having to do with parks. So, the, yeah, the, as mentioned before, Glover Archibald Park is adjacent to this site, and it's the area immediately to the, I guess, to the right of what we see on our screen there. And I would just want to mention that the Park Service does still have some concerns about buildings that would be constructed adjacent to the parkland, about the stormwater structures that are proposed, or the stormwater facilities that are proposed in that area. However, we're quite encouraged by the interactions that we've had on this project, and there's been good coordination. In fact, a number of my staff people are out walking the site today and learning more and more about it. And I would just recommend that, that good coordination continue as this project develops. And when it comes time to considering a motion, I would like to add a bullet point relating to continuing coordination with the Park Service. Fairly benign.
Ms. Greenwald, did you have, Ms. Greenwald, did you have comments?
Not quite yet.
Okay. Mr. Dennis for follow-up.
Yeah, I'd like to get back to Metro again, because it strikes me that the potential Achilles' heel for this project at the next stage, in fact, for planning throughout the Washington region, is whether or not Metro can ride itself. To get people to decrease the number of auto trips and increase the number of metro trips, you'll have to have some pretty powerful incentives down the road if you're going to do that, and right now, I don't know if it would be possible under any circumstances. Hopefully, General Manager Sarls and Metro getting their act together. It, it remains to be seen, but I don't know if the escalators work at Tenley Town or not. They don't work at Union Station, and one of them is constantly being repaired. Bethesda, of course, was a disaster, still may be, and just coming over here today, I was a little late because of a track malfunction coming not too far away. So, I think that we're going to have to hold our breath on planning generally in the Washington area to see if, if Metro can enable us to go forward with the development that is predicated on their functioning as they're supposed to be functioning, which they are not at the present time.
Mr. Miller, you want to go first?
The 1,800 additional seats that this contemplates, where are they coming from? Are they currently, they're currently in other locations, or are they, are they just new?
No, they'd be, they'd be existing, but they would actually be, and the specific people where they would come from are not identified yet, but they, general topics, like general categories of folks, intel and so on, those would be the kind of areas that they're looking at right now, consolidating intel functions in one place and so on.
But geographically, can you point, at this point, where they're, where they're coming from, moving inside the district, or are they coming from Maryland or Virginia locations, or?
Let me ask, I have a DHS representative here. Let me ask them to address that.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Rich McGruder. I'm the director for the Headquarters Consolidation Program for the Department of Homeland Security. The NAC master plan is a projected growth of the department through FY16. We don't contemplate currently adding any new seats to the, to the NAC in our consolidation plan.
Can you answer the geographical question, though, whether they're?
Well, everybody that's projected as part of the consolidation program is already in the NCR.
Right, but are they coming, would these, would these seats be filled by people who are currently in the District of Columbia, or they're coming from location?
Well, that's not known. It's, they're projected.
It's not known.
So, the folks that are there now are projected to be moved over to the St. Elizabeth's campus, and then we're going to backfill other elements of the department to the spaces here, currently projected at less than 2,500.
So, the 2,400 that are there now are, would be moving to the St. Elizabeth's West Campus?
The majority of them would be. The secretary and her support, and so the idea is to collapse commercial leases into federal space, and we're not looking at adding any new people at this time.
And of the 2,400 that are there now, do you know the, where they, where they currently live? Do they, do you have the percentages of where they live?
I think we have that data. Well, we're in 50 different locations, but I think his question is the population that goes to the NAC. Where do they live currently? Virginia? We have it by zip code. Pardon me?
It's in the plan. 53 percent Northern Virginians.
Oh, okay.
53 percent Northern Virginians.
Yeah, but those 53 percent Northern Virginians are going to be commuting over to St. Elizabeth when that project, you know, over the course of time, between now and FY16. So, where these new people are coming from, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a function of how the department grows and.
It's also, if I may, going to be vastly affected by budget and how we are, how fast we're able to progress at St. Elizabeth. So, the whole thing is, is a sort of a matrix that need, that every single piece affects the other one. So, it doesn't surprise me at all that we don't, that that's not knowable at this point, where they're coming from and who's going where. The first piece, that NAC, that, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich. NAC, the NAC in the sequence of priorities for DHS and their consolidation plan is secondary to St. Elizabeth, but St. Elizabeth is, is slowing down as are other projects because of the budget. So, it's, and it will have a huge effect on what happens at the NAC and who, and who's going where and when.
That's correct.
Can you answer, I realize that it's not going to be the same population, but I was just trying to get an understanding of where people are coming from currently who work there. So, 53 percent live in Northern Virginia. How many live in, do you know how many live in Maryland?
35.
35.
35 percent? 35.
So, 88 percent, which is about the percentage for the DHS as a whole. Almost 90 percent live outside of the District of Columbia. We certainly want to develop programs where you can, where the DHS employees will be able to live near, near where they work so that we don't have the traffic problems. And there is a district program that is called Live Near Your Work, which we would hope that the department would somehow be able to participate in, and the federal government could somehow support, support in funding, helping assist us in our funding that program. I share the concerns that Ms. Stongeaser expressed about the, about the uncertainty of, of the transportation management plan at this stage and the inadequacy of it. So, I have a discomfort, an unreadiness, really, to vote in favor of something that says comments favorably on a draft master plan. If we could take out the word favorably, I would be perfectly happy to vote for this, because there are a lot of concerns that are expressed in this EDR, but then we're commenting favorably upon the draft master plan, which I assume all this has to be, a lot of mitigation has to get, has to be worked out, which hasn't been worked out at all, it seems. So, I'm not prepared to vote for this in its current form today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Proventia, and then Ms. Greenwald.
Just two follow-on comments. What's the current, how would you describe the current mass transit benefit program that DHS has for the employees at the NAC? Well-supported, 50 percent participation, low participation?
We actually don't have a number for actually how many people are actually engaged in that, which is the subsidy.
Yes, yes.
We don't actually have.
That's something I think that we would be welcome to see at future presentations.
A part of the survey that we're doing right now may capture some of that information, and that's currently going on, and that was that NAC-specific travel survey that Cheryl was talking about. It's in motion right now.
We have a fairly robust program in DOD. We have more than 50 percent of our 67,000 employees that participate, so we can share some positive lessons learned if you're receptive to that. On the issue, very respectful of the concern about the, from the surrounding neighborhoods on the overflow parking issue. However, during the normal development process, would not GSA reach out through the public meetings to those groups and have, provide them an opportunity to further articulate their concerns?
Yes.
Or do we need to make an additional amendment similar to what Mr. May was talking about for the Park Service?
Part of the response to the public's concerns is, and that's what we were talking about with Representative Norton's office, is that she is facilitating getting together a, a transportation community group in which we will talk about all these issues to see how we can, and on a regular basis, meet with representatives from the neighborhood so that we can identify what particular issues they have and then come up with a strategy that would mitigate those impacts. So, right now, we're working off of some, like Cheryl said, that we're working off of DHS's entire population survey for the National Capital Region, so that was talking towards the modal split that we were looking at up there, but there's several things that we would have But there's several things that we would have to do specific to the Nebraska Avenue complex and that area that are specific to that neighborhood and that neighborhood's impacts. So these groups would be getting together and discussing that. That would then facilitate additions to the transportation management plan. As Mina had mentioned, that we're just at the early stage right now.
Right, sure.
And we're just seeking kind of concurrence from you all to move forward so that as we move towards the final master plan, that we have, or have addressed a lot of those issues in the transportation management plan, as well as the thing we're doing in parallel, and that's working with DHS and the community on TMP for the immediate, whether there was a master plan or not, to address the immediate concerns of the neighborhood.
We appreciate GSA and DHS agreeing to participate with Congressman Norton's office. That would be our basic expectation. Our concern was, as opposed to being in reactive mode, we would actively and proactively reach out to the neighborhood communities. I think if we got that assurance, I think that would address some of our concerns.
I just wanted to add to Scott's comment. I'm Jim Clark from MTFA Architecture. And there have been several meetings with the ANC's directly, with ANC 3E and 3D. And we met with them and we heard their comments, and we have received comments on the draft EIS and are responding to those currently.
Initiated by your firm or in response to?
Initiated by GSA and through our firm, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
In addition to that, we have had two public meetings where the ANC's and the public was invited and it was well-attended, and we listened again to all their comments.
Let me go to Ms. Greenwald, as promised.
I just want to make a couple of points. I could understand the reticence, and there are issues that we, and we know about it. This is a process of discovery. GSA has demonstrated no inclination to ignore the neighborhood in any way. And we are at 35%. Yes, it is a draft. If we were somehow turning our backs on the issues that we're very much aware of, we're working with DDOT, have been, I'm a little confused at the sort of resistance to looking at this for what it is and where in the process that it is. Because I, the inference that we're going to just proceed boldly down one path and say, "Thank you very much gratuitously," and keep doing what we want to do, doesn't seem warranted here. I don't think we're sending any of those signals at all.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, let me go to you, and then I think there may be an amendment or two.
Yeah.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll yield to the lady if you want, please.
Let me go to Ms. Greenwald, as promised. I'm sorry.
You guys sort of described what I was going to ask, which is, are there other steps, projects, things you're doing to further the TMP that you haven't already mentioned in, you know, in your discussion today?
Yes, this draft 35% master plan was completed in January. And so there's actually been considerable time since then where there's been, I think we've met eight times with DDOT and have complied with, I think, everything that they've asked for in order to provide more data. In particular, this survey is going on right now to provide more detailed information. It's due tomorrow, and we're finding that the results are actually very similar to what the TMP was based on, on the broader DHS results. And so we're finding that our assumptions were correct. But nevertheless, we will, I know that GSA and DHS are committed to continue to work with DDOT. We have a meeting in a week and a half with DDOT, and we will continue to meet until all of their concerns are addressed. It's a long process. This process is going to last another year and a half. And I think it's, DHS and GSA have really showed that they're proactive in addressing the community's concern. I'm a member of that community, and so I'm just as concerned as everybody in that community to make sure that DHS is supportive of the whole community.
I appreciate that, and I have, knowing that Ms. Norton is involved in this, gives me some comfort that I know if she's on top of it, her leadership will help make sure there's consensus and continue to have group meetings where people are in the room together discussing it. As people around this table are thinking of not supporting the EDR, I just want to make sure we all understand what happens if we do not support the EDR. I think my assumption is you will have to start from square one, and I'm not sure how that affects DHS's overall consolidation goals. Maybe DHS wants to address that, how that will just slow everything down. Anything from GSA's perspective on that?
Well, generally, if we don't do anything at all, essentially, if we don't look at any development of the site, things stay in status quo. And as we understand that that's not an optimum situation. I mean, there's a lot of environmental things that need to be addressed, and there's just things around the site that certainly could be improved. Right now, there is no master plan in place, so there has to be a master plan that is implemented so that we can do anything out there. So that's why, that has a lot to do with what we're, how we're generating this master plan, as well as facilitating the mission of DHS. Certainly, they can speak in more detail about the criticality of this particular component to their overall housing strategy for the NCR. But definitely in their consolidation strategy, whatever that timeline may be, this is certainly a major component of that, to facilitate, you know, their overall housing needs. St. Elizabeth's is certainly a big component of that, but the Nebraska Avenue complex serves, will serve a vital function and role for them. So if we don't do anything, then there's a lot of those same issues that are going to plague the community, that are going to affect the site, the buildings. So there's a lot of issues. The master plan tries to address a lot of those, and this is, this is why this has kind of brought to the spotlight, that we've actually started to develop plans and strategies to do something at the site. This is where the community's voice has actually had the opportunity to be heard by us, by DHS, so it actually has motivated people to do something about it. Without this process in place, then they will still be facing the same issues, you know, year after year after year. So...
Does DHS have anything they want to add?
Hi, I'm Carol Mitten, and I'm the Executive Director for Urban Affairs and Headquarters Consolidation for DHS. You know, I think the questions about what would we do if this were not approved today, in some ways, we will proceed on as we would if you passed the recommendation from the Executive Director, because the feedback that we've been getting, as has been said, is going to guide the master plan. The community concerns that have been raised, they're perfectly legitimate. I mean, we should be doing better about how we manage transportation at the NAC. We're crafting an interim plan to deal with the population that's there now. As Rich said, when we look ahead to the population that will be at the NAC after we move to St. Elizabeth's, that's going to be a different population. So why are we surveying the people now? It's because we want to manage those people better. We have more staff devoted to developing transportation management plans at DHS now than we've ever had before. And I have to say, it's because of St. Elizabeth's that we've been sensitized to it, because we know we have a very aggressive, the TMP that's going to get us to where we need to be on St. Elizabeth's has to be very aggressive. And the TMP that's going to help us manage the NAC better has to be very aggressive, and we're trying to implement policies across the NCR that will get us there. So, you know, we will take all the feedback that we've been given and utilize it, and, you know, we'd like, you know, I think the strategy about not commenting favorably, just commenting, that's very instructive for us, and we'll come back with a better plan.
Okay, great. I had one last question for either of you. Anecdotally, I've heard that the conditions at the NAC are not very good. Can somebody address sort of the conditions of the buildings and the workspace for DHS employees currently and the need to upgrade them?
There's a tremendous need to update, and we have focused on transportation, but these other needs, having worked on buildings in the site, are dramatic, and there needs to be a master plan to guide the process. It is a very precious historic site for two reasons. One, it was historic from a, as the first girl's school in the US that really instructed girls for leadership. And secondly, because of its role in cryptanalysis during World War II. And there are some significant, there is a significant historic building on site, and there are significant buildings that contribute to this historic site. And they're in very bad shape and really need the master plan to clean up the site and to preserve them, frankly. Stormwater management, as was mentioned earlier, is a grave issue on the site. There is virtually no stormwater management on the site, and this site backs up and slopes towards Archibald Glover Park. And so that needs to be addressed. And the master plan addresses it under GSA's guidelines of sustainability, and the goal is a gold lead master plan. And so these are just some of the things, very significant things, that the, letting the master plan progress will allow us to progress and to refine as we look at this for the next year and a half.
Thank you. I think along the lines of what the chairman said before, that this plan is a draft and, you know, they are where they should be in the scheme of things. And I think that both GSA and DHS have shown willingness and already efforts underway to deal with the transportation issues that I think everyone around this table recognizes and they recognize. So I will be supporting the EDR as written. I would not, perhaps there are ways we can ask GSA to continue to update the commission on its efforts on an interim plan, transportation management plan, and as they look forward on a long-term plan as a compromise position, perhaps.
Thank you, Ms. Greenwald. Let me do a couple of things first. First, let me call on Mr. Costa, who may have a clarifying point. Second, I'll go to Mr. Dixon, who had a comment. And then third, as I think there may be an amendment or two floating around, I would like to entertain a motion on the EDR so that we can get it before us in an amendable state. First, Mr. Costa.
Yes, I'd just like to clarify a couple of points. I think in terms of the action that is before you today, it is approval of comments to GSA regarding the preliminary draft plan that they submitted to the commission. And so you understand, if you do not approve or don't take any action today, there will be no comments ever submitting to GSA, and there will be no official commission position. Whether you have concerns regarding transportation, traffic, transit, or any of these issues, we will be silent on the issue because there will be no action taken. So my suggestion would be, there's a recommendation in front of you. Obviously, there are more, there are additional concerns about transportation that may, should be reflected in this. You could also ask if GSA is willing to come back before the submission of a final plan, to come in and talk about some of their findings with respect to the survey and the TMP and the progresses they've been making with the community, so at least they're brought up to date before they submit something final. And I think if they're willing to do so, I think that would be a helpful step, because as we, as they acknowledge, some of these items have not been completed. The TMP is still in formation. They're still doing their work, and I think it would be helpful for the commission to hear the results of some of their findings prior to submitting a plan. So at least you have some of that information. And if you have additional comments, you could ask for that so they could accommodate that as part of their final submission. So I think those things would be helpful. This is to be, I think to have constructive comments to give back to GSA and DHS would actually be a helpful thing. And if you hear from the community that they have concerns about off-site parking and other issues, I think that would also be something you want to amplify in your comments back to GSA, and that, hopefully, that's something you'll be looking at as you review the final plan.
Mr. Dixon.
Mr. Chairman, I have two, three comments. One, just want you all to know there's a lot of housing in Anacostia, so you guys can start looking to move theirs right away. And number two, we'd like to get some steady funding for Metro Hill so we can be sure we can keep the service and make it work. Those are just quick ones. The last, I think people get a little too lathered up about this. I don't sense there's any likelihood this is not going to pass. It's just that there are people who spent time to come in from our community who have still got some questions. And I believe they're in good hands. I think you guys are going to do it. GSA has always been very good about this. We got the point. But there's some of us here who have to make sure that these citizens understand that we want, you know, if we, if we have this unanimous vote on this, then where's the mark, the indicator that we have concerns that were expressed? Then everybody has those concerns. So, I mean, if you lose two or three votes because folks just want to make the point that we want to be sure it's done, and we believe it will be done, but sometimes you have to, you know, do that. This is the only forum on this issue that the community has an opportunity to speak. They can't take it to the city council, they can't take it to zoning, it's here. So when they come here to speak on issues, we want to make sure that they're noted. And sometimes I'll vote against something, it's just to note we want it to go forward, but we want you to be sure there's some concern, and we'll know it's going to be resolved. At least I hope it will be and expected to be. But there's no need to try to, we're not lobbying anybody here to vote. We're just saying, look, we may want to make a minority position in the Supreme Court and in my study of law. It's sometimes an important position, just to be on the record, a minority position, that we were concerned about something, which we are concerned about. So that's finished.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. So that we can have further actionable discussion, the chair would entertain a motion on the EDR.
It's all moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. It's been moved and seconded that the EDR be approved now. Further discussion. Mr. May.
Yeah, I would, I'm actually sorry that Mr. Dixon moved so quickly to make the motion because I was going to shock my friends over at DHS and GSA by making the motion to approve this report, of course, knowing that we still have a final action to take on this. But, and I would just say that, you know, I think overall, this is a very good plan. It's been, it's well-thought-out and sensitive to the context. It's responding to the right things. It's dealing with EISA 438, and we're all trying to address that in the federal government. It's, you know, making the appropriate moves from a historic preservation point of view, and most importantly, it's increasing the number of people who will be working at this site, but at the same time, bumping the parking ratio up to the point where it complies with the comprehensive plan. And the net result is that there are no additional cars that are going to be coming and parking on the campus. Now, granted, there's probably more that needs to be done to make sure that, you know, the category that was not on the sheet, which was drives to work but does not park at work, parks in the neighborhood, or whatever it is, I mean, that's not shown, and I think, you know, obviously, something needs to be done to get a handle on that. But I think that for every other reason that we think is important about approving master plans like this, this one is hitting all the marks. So I don't, it's almost baffling to me that this doesn't get, would not get a unanimous approval as it is, of course, with one small amendment, which I will now propose.
I would draw mine if you want to make another amendment.
That's okay, I think they got the point. Anyway, I would just add a bullet point that recommending that DHS and GSA, or whoever it is, continue to work with the National Park Service to assure the potential impacts to overarching Park are minimized and mitigated. And I phrase it that way, minimized and mitigated, because first has to be minimized, and then once it's determined that there is some sort of impact, that there be appropriate mitigation.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment to my motion.
Well, it's been moved.
If you've got a motion, you can accept the amendment. I'm the mover. I'm accepting as a change to my motion.
Good. It's been moved, well, you moved it.
Yep.
He moved it, Mr. Dixon.
And I...
I seconded it and offered a friendly amendment, so...
I accept it.
Okay. And might you, once again, kind of restate your...
My addition?
Just so that we have it fairly...
So, continue to work with the National Park Service to assure that potential impacts to overarching Park are minimized and mitigated. Or what cannot be minimized is mitigated, maybe that's the better way to put it.
Ms. Young, you have that?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Wright.
I'd like to talk about something other than cars, just for one moment, for something new and different. I just, I would be remiss if I did not comment on the recommendation to evaluate a lower security level. And now I'm not, I'm not even speaking from the DHS perspective, and I'm sure they have I would ask as an urbanist for everyone to think about what this means. If you were to make this a Level Four or lower, it is a campus. It has historically functioned as one, putting a Level Five... Um, putting a Level Five facility in here seems to me it has all of the, it, all of the right circumstances. Um, Level Five facilities have to go somewhere. And, um, imagine the alternatives to putting a Level Five facility with however many people end up, or seats, end up in it, in the middle of, um, oh, I don't know, downtown, to be really extreme. This, the, uh, topographically, um, and within the, the existing, um, street grid, it has all the, um, all the right moves to become and to, to accommodate all the things that come with a Level Five facility. Um, so I would hope that while, I guess we can look at it, but I don't know why we would, really. Um, because it's so accommodating to, with the setbacks, et cetera. So I just wanted to talk about something other than traffic. So that's all I got.
Mr. Hart, did you have anything?
I think most of the issues that I was concerned about with respect to stormwater management, addressing transportation management plan and traffic along with that have already been addressed. I want to say that, uh, it's encouraging to see a development of master plan that really does try to create a, a campus feel, an opportunity to create pedestrian zones, and, uh, I like it.
I'm just happy somebody's submitting us a master plan finally.
That's what happens.
Okay. Hearing no further, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller.
When, when is the TNP for the current site going to be complete? And when is the TNP for the, um, proposed master plan going to be complete? If, if, if you're under, not under the current schedule.
Well, currently, in, in reference to the TNP that, for the current condition, that's in progress right now. And I think, um, probably.
Six months?
Six months out that we probably should have that current TNP, uh, implemented, embedded, based on community input and the, and the working groups that are in place right now. That's the one that we would use to, uh, affect a change right now. Uh, for the long term, the, the TNP that we've got, uh, originally was at about seventy-five or so, uh, percent of information gathering. We've got information from the community, so that's now adding to it. We also have, uh, CFA, NCPC, DDOT, Park Service. So we've got additional inputs into that through the EIS process. So now we're going to take that information and start to go through that TNP again and see where we need to make that more robust and address the mitigation strategies. So we haven't actually sit down and projected that out. That's in the next round, uh, of our, uh, scheduled development, is to actually look at what we have to do to implement more strategies in the TNP, talk with our consultant to figure out, you know, how much time they're going to need to do that. Uh, but then we could, we can always get back to you and, and give you that information that tells you, here's our revised schedule based on what we just sat down and discussed. Uh, but obviously, we want to do that soon, because that will have an impact on the EIS as well.
I'm just trying to understand if, 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 how, uh, if we deferred approval until we solve the, the TNP with all of the strategies, uh, how, how that, if, if, if that would have a detrimental impact on the planning. It would seem that would be the point that we would be, I would be more comfortable approving a draft master plan when I saw the strategies and mitigation measures, uh, whether there's stormwater management or, and the transportation management, uh, and off-site parking management. I'd just like to see how, I, I don't believe you can get, I, I don't really believe that you can get to that one to four ratio, because I don't see anything that gets you there. Uh, and what's in front of me at least. Um, maybe it's in a draft TNP that I, I haven't looked at, but I don't see it. So I want to be able to, um, maybe craft an amendment. I thought an amendment was coming to, from, from somewhere over on my right. Uh, that would have, that might have accomplished what I, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at here. But, uh, it's not coming. Um, if it's going to be amended, maybe I can craft something.
Sure. While you're working, uh, might we want to go ahead and discuss, uh, a time for, uh, you to revisit us on an interim basis to give us a, an update? Mr. Costa, uh, might you have a suggestion as to when appropriate timing would be, uh, in the great scheme of things? While they're conferring, Mr. May.
Um, I just wanted to comment. You know, we, we, uh, accepted the notion that for the St. Elizabeth's campus, which is a lot further from Metro and has a lot more parking entanglements, uh, and, uh, and vehicle, uh, just a whole lot more issues. There was a, you know, a piece of parkland that you had to drive an access road through. I mean, all of these things, it was a much, much more complicated thing, but yet this commission wholeheartedly believed that one to four parking ratio was achievable. Here, it seems eminently achievable. And I'm, I, it, again, it's baffling to me that, that we would think that somehow it was, it would be doubtful in this circumstance. If it could be achieved anywhere, it should be able to be achieved here.
And, and if I could, they're, uh, in talking with the consultant, they're projecting out that probably within about two months, maybe three at the latest, that we would have a revised, uh, TNP.
Okay.
I'm sorry. What was that, two months?
Uh, two to three months, not to exceed.
That's for revise. I think there may be an, an interest in having a brief update at some point. Uh, Mr. Costa, do you have a suggestion?
I would say that's probably the right time to come in.
Oh, that would be the right time.
Right. Well, at least to bring in some of the question, uh, questions and, um, that, to fill in some of the gaps that were identified in this, uh, discussion. I think they would have a lot of the answers.
Is this, is this idea through staff consultation or through another formal commission meeting?
I'd made a suggestion, at least because there's some discomfort here in terms of not knowing exactly what the, you know, what, where we're at with the TNP and some of the survey results, at least to come in and just give the commission a quick update in terms of, you know, the status of that. And also some of these discussions going on with the community. And we've done that before with applicants, so at least to bring the commission up to date on questions that they've raised in the past. And I think there'll be ongoing staff consultation as part of it. Uh, and I think the, uh, specific timing of that, I think we could determine once your consultants have finished their work and, um, and there's a comfort level at, uh, GSA to, to bring it forward. But I think it's really to make sure that your questions are addressed and that, you know, they are moving forward in a direction that you're comfortable in with respect to some of the questions raised with the TNP.
But the interim update would be before they come back?
Before the?
For the final.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Hart or Mr. Miller? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, in, in response to Mr. Miller's comments, um, it was my observation that this is really not a draft of the master plan. It's really, in my mind, more a presentation of the concept and a direction. And if it were a draft of the master plan, it would include at least draft sections for the TNP, traffic, and stormwater management. So, um, I'm comfortable if, if we're going to see this again before it becomes a final, uh, master plan, if we see the drafts of those types of components. Um, and if we're confident we're going to see that, then I'm okay with the EDR as it's written and amended.
I just wanted to point out that, that the TNP was included in the, uh, in the, uh, master plan, uh, that you have right now. We do have a, a draft version of the TNP that's, that was moved forward.
Are there any further discussion?
Let me try this. Um, uh, I'd like to try to move an amendment that, um, instead of the phrase "comments favorably on the draft master plan," um, I would rephrase that to refine that the draft master plan for the Nebraska Avenue Complex is incomplete and recommends that GSA, uh, submit, resubmit the draft master plan upon completion and submission of a revised transportation management plan. That would be my, um, amendment, Mr. Chairman.
That comes by way of a motion.
Yes. I would, I would move that.
I'll second it for you, Rob.
Thanks.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on that amendment?
Would not by its very nature a draft be incomplete?
No.
That's why we call it a draft?
Not hearing further comment. All those in favor of Mr. Miller's, uh, amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
No. Um, those who vote aye, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. And for purposes of make sure we got it, for those who vote no, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. The motion fails on a vote of four to six. We now have the, um, EDR as amended before us. It has been properly moved and seconded, uh, as amended. Is there, uh, so all, all in favor of the EDR as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? I'm sorry.
No.
We did not vote on the first amendment.
We have not adopted the first amendment.
It was proposed as a friendly amendment and I, and it was accepted.
I accept it as part of my amendment.
Would you be more comfortable if we had a vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Restate it.
So this is with the friendly amendment about the park service and?
Yes.
Yes.
Like nicely with the park service.
Yes. Ms., Ms. Young, would you like to read that amendment?
Recomends that DHS and GSA continue to work with NPS to ensure that potential impacts to Glover, Archibald Park are minimized and mitigated.
Assure. Assure.
Assure.
Does, does not the, uh, the final wording though, mitigation, raise that to a much higher standard of compliance, other than just?
No, the idea is simply that the, the impacts would be minimized and anything that could not be minimized would be mitigated.
So you made a motion, I'll second it, since I accepted it already.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? One no. Mr. Reventia. And now, the EDR as amended as before you. All in favor of the EDR as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
No's, raise your hand. Mr. Beltran, Mr. Miller, Ms. Steingasser, and Mr. Dixon. So the EDR as amended passes. Thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. Thank you very much. Agenda item 5B is the draft master plan of the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, and we have Mr. Wile before us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission. Uh, this is a draft master plan for, uh, the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, uh, installation in southwest Washington, DC, submitted by the United States Department of the Navy for commission comments. So, uh, Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, or JBAB, is, uh, shown here in blue, located to the south of downtown Washington, DC, uh, adjacent to the, the confluence of the Anacostia and Potomac Rivers, uh, directly adjacent to, uh, I-295 and South Capitol Street, uh, and very close to the, um, the, uh, federal, um, secure campus of St. Elizabeth's, which is currently under construction. So the, the draft master plan was, uh, was started in reaction to the, um, to the 2005 Base Realignment Closure Act, uh, which mandated the merging of these, uh, three separate installations, NSC, uh, NSF Anacostia, Bowling Air Force Base, and Bellevue Housing Complex, which is Navy housing. Um, the BRAC, uh, Act, uh, basically mandated the, the joining into a joint base to create a more, uh, efficient, um, cost-effective installation. So here are the major master plan assumptions. Uh, first of all, this is more of a framework plan. Uh, most of the projects contained in the plan are, are hypothetical. Uh, they're, they're at the conceptual stage at this point, with the exception of these three, um, these three defined projects, uh, which are short-term, uh, either under construction currently or, or short-term. Uh, the master plan assumes an employment population increase of 25%, uh, a total employee parking reduction of approximately 400 spaces, uh, which would bring the current employee parking ratio up from a one to 1.66, up to a 1.2, uh, 0.42, uh, employee ratio. And again, the, the, the master plan assumes the, the merging of, uh, these three installations, which actually occurred last year on October 1st. So basically, the significant components of, of the master plan, uh, first of all, there's an urban design framework plan, which, uh, separates JBAB into eight different, uh, neighborhoods. Uh, each of the neighborhoods has its goals, uh, and also its, uh, does it, design standards. Uh, the second major element is a future land use plan for JBAB, uh, consisting of a total of, uh, seven land uses. And there's also a landscape plan, which, uh, specifies, uh, more specific landscape design standards for, uh, different districts around JBAB, uh, and, in addition to those districts, special areas and also, uh, uh, specific landscape criteria for, uh, three levels of, of the interior roadways, the primary, secondary, and tertiary roadways. These are the planning objectives that, that the draft master plan is, is framed around. Uh, and in the next series of slides, I'll go through, uh, each objective one by one and, and discuss how the master plan, uh, supports each, each of these objectives. So the first objective, uh, this is, uh, the existing land use map, uh, consisting of, of, uh, nine different land uses. Uh, there's a lot of redundancy, uh, between, uh, Anacostia, um, the Anacostia portion of JBAB and, and bowling portions of JBAB. And so what, what the draft master plan seeks to do is, is consolidate some of the land uses into seven, uh, and also merge some of these more redundant uses, um, that, that, uh, existed on, uh, in, in the separate facilities, pre-BRAC. Number two, uh, the plan seeks to increase development density in key locations. Uh, specifically, the master plan identifies three, this north administrative, uh, mission complex located directly adjacent to South Capitol Street, uh, and also two, uh, corridors in the heart of JBAB. Uh, the master plan seeks to densify these, these areas and create more of a pedestrian-oriented streetscape, uh, along McCord Street, uh, and Castle Avenue. Uh, and then, uh, the master plan identifies a pedestrian extension, uh, from, uh, Castle Avenue. Uh, the master plan seeks to foster multimodal, uh, transportation, uh, within JBAB. Uh, here it identifies a future, uh, planned shuttle system, uh, along with a number of planned future stops. And the shuttle system would support, uh, an enhanced and expanded pedestrian and bicycle, uh, network within JBAB. Uh, this, this, uh, pedestrian bike infrastructure would consist of bike lanes, uh, multi-use trails, and, and also, uh, bring, uh, basically the, the existing sidewalks up to ADA compliance and, and create more of a, a pedestrian-oriented, uh, environment on the base. The master plan protects and enhances historic resources. There's currently, uh, an archaeological, archaeological survey ongoing on JBAB, uh, and, and so the master plan, plan is, is identifying all the existing historic resources on the base. Uh, it also, uh, identifies and seeks to preserve the historic core area of the installation. And also, uh, through the, uh, the landscape plan, uh, the landscape plan has a specific component, uh, with, with landscape standards that, uh, are intended to enhance and, and, uh, preserve the, the existing character of the historic residential district. Uh, the draft plan has a sustainability component in which it outlines a, a pretty wide variety of sustainability strategies that, uh, future JBAB development should adhere to, such as rain barrels, uh, vegetated bio swales, green roofs, uh, and porous pavement, um, bicycle storage, and, and more pedestrian-friendly, uh, walkable, um, urban design. Number seven, uh, the draft master plan seeks to enhance views to and from the installation. Uh, in particular, it identifies two key, uh, perspectives off the installation, uh, and it shows some, some massing diagrams of what potential future, uh, development could look like. Uh, here, this is the perspective from the Frederick Douglass Bridge, looking south into JBAB. And here, here's some potential future development, uh, and what that might look like from, from Haynes Point, looking into the facility. And the eighth, uh, planning objective, the, the master plan seeks to protect and enhance the waterway, uh, waterfront greenway. Um, here you can see in the existing land use map, there's a, didn't, uh, a discontinuous, uh, waterfront, kind of open space recreational area, and- of open space recreational area, and the master plan tries to unify this open, more open recreational area, so it's more continuous along the waterfront. So, with that, staff analyzed the three components of the submission, the draft master plan, the transportation management plan, and the environmental assessment. We found several things that we felt were promising, such as strategies that attempted to limit visual impacts on the surrounding communities, landscaping standards that would help reinforce the character of JAB neighborhoods, and a pretty good variety of sustainability strategies for future JAB development. However, there were a number of issues with the environmental assessment and TMP and master plan as well, and I'll go through these issues one by one now. First of all, the EA was inadequate, because it really didn't have a cumulative impacts analysis. In particular, the fact that the EA identified future development and its impact on roadways and traffic as being minor or moderate indicates the fact that, really, there was not a future traffic conditions analysis performed. Such a conditions analysis would not only account for future potential JAB traffic, but also other east-of-the-river, local nearby developments, such as Poplar Point, Berry Farms, and St. Elizabeth's, and also future planned infrastructure improvements. A future traffic conditions analysis would assess the impacts of reclassifying the First Sterling Gate as the primary truck gate, and also account for that increased truck traffic through that gate, and also recognize the fact that, you know, there are several planned infrastructure improvements in the area, such as realignment of the South Capitol Street and Frederick Douglass Bridge alignment. You can see from this graphic that one of the potential alternatives identifies a traffic circle, and the right-of-way would cut across JAB land. In addition, staff identified an inadequate transportation management plan. It appeared as if it had a good start, looking at some of the existing conditions. However, again, it did not consider future, the future growth of JAB in terms of the traffic impacts on the local community. It didn't do a... it was inadequate in looking at not only the existing alternative travel patterns to JAB, but also how people would get there in the future, looking at the shuttle system and walking and bicycling. It did not outline specific detailed TMP goals and objectives to measure JAB's, future JAB's, transportation management, travel demand efforts. There was no discussion of how visitors, residents, and delivery traffic would reach JAB in the future, and there really appeared to be a lack of coordination between DDOT, GSA, DHS, and Metro, and putting together the transportation management plan. And staff recognizes an opportunity with St. Elizabeth's, located so close to JAB, which does have a very detailed, robust transportation management plan to coordinate future JAB transportation management planning efforts with St. Elizabeth's. And lastly, one area of focus in the future is the fact that the draft master plan proposes a 1 to 2.42 employee parking ratio, and, more importantly, the TMP does not demonstrate why JAB is unable to comply with the 2004 Comprehensive Plan 1 to 4 ratio, which it should either meet or demonstrate that the installation is unable to meet that. So, as such, it is the executive director's recommendation to the commission to provide several comments on the draft master plan for JAB. Number one, to comment favorably on the inclusion of development strategies that limit the visual impacts, future-based development on surrounding communities, on the plan's landscaping standards that help to preserve the character of existing joint-based neighborhoods, and the sustainability chapter, which promotes a wide variety of sustainability-oriented strategies for future-based development. And to comment unfavorably on the proposed employee parking ratio of 1 to 2.42, which does exceed the 2004 Comprehensive Plan ratio of 1 to 4. Since the TMP does not justify why joint-based Anacostia Bowling will not meet the Comprehensive Plan parking ratio of 1 to 4 for this location, the master plan environmental assessment does not analyze an alternative that meets that 1 to 4 parking ratio. And the commission notes that the JAB environmental assessment's cumulative impacts section is required to consider the cumulative impacts of growing JAB when considered with other planned development, such as that at St. Elizabeth's and Poplar Point, and that the joint-based Anacostia Bowling master plan should indicate a level, the level of NEPA review that will be conducted at the project level following completion of the master plan, and encourages the Navy to work with the Department of Homeland Security and GSA to explore the possibility of developing and managing a coordinated TMP for JAB in St. Elizabeth's. And to recommend that the JAB master plan be revised to acknowledge, and the design of the north administrative mission complex should reflect the possibility of a future realignment of South Capitol Street and the Frederick Douglass Memorial Bridge. And lastly, the commission requests the following additional information in the final JAB master plan as outlined in NCPC's master plan submission guidelines, and I won't read through all this text, but I'll try to summarize. Basically, the TMP needs more detailed information on existing, as well as future, conditions, including much more detailed information about alternative non-single-occupant vehicle modes, more clearly defined TMP goals and objectives, a more detailed process of how JAB will better coordinate their future travel demand management planning with DDOT, Metro, and St. Elizabeth's, and to demonstrate how JAB can comply with the 1 to 4 Comprehensive Plan parking ratio. We require more information related to visitors, residents, and delivery traffic, a more detailed summary information about existing and future development on JAB, and lastly, a more detailed analysis of the master plan's potential effects on historic resources in completion of the Section 106 project, or process, excuse me. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the Navy also has representation to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed, I'd like to go ahead and call on Carol Mitten from the Department of Homeland Security. She has signed up to speak as representing DHS. Ms. Mitten will have five minutes. At the end of her public comment, we will bring the discussion back, and I'll note that, I believe it's Lieutenant Colonel McClure who's here today, who can, or perhaps others as well, who will be available to engage with the commission on questions and discussion. Ms. Mitten, welcome.
Thank you. I don't know if I have enough copies. There's a few more. As I said earlier, my name's Carol Mitten, and I bid you good afternoon. I'm here today to testify in behalf of the Department of Homeland Security regarding Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, and the irony of me testifying about this is not lost on me. DHS is opposed to the master plan for Joint Base Anacostia Bowling as currently proposed. The plan will negatively impact the transportation network that serves not only the joint base but St. Elizabeth's campus. In the case of Firth Sterling Avenue, the negative impact will be severe, and that's basically our main access point at St. Elizabeth's. We ask the commission to require the Navy to provide further analysis and proposed mitigation related to the following three areas: the truck screening at the Firth Sterling Gate, the lack of accommodation of the Frederick Douglass Bridge realignment, and the cumulative impacts related to increased traffic to and from the joint base. The proposal by the Navy to shift truck traffic from the south gate to the Firth Sterling Gate has the potential to gridlock traffic along Firth Sterling Avenue during peak periods. Truck screening at the Firth Sterling Gate will force most of the truck traffic serving the joint base onto Firth Sterling Avenue, which is the worst possible route that could be selected in the context of the transportation network. From the analysis that has been done in support of the NEPA compliance for St. Elizabeth's, we know that with the introduction of the West Access Road and the related St. Elizabeth's traffic, as well as the overall increase in traffic, by 2030, intersections along Firth Sterling Avenue will deteriorate to failing. Some intersections will fail as early as 2016. The most heavily impacted intersection will be Firth Sterling Avenue and South Capitol Street. As if that information isn't bad enough, there are three important factors to recognize in relying on the St. Elizabeth's traffic analysis to draw conclusions about the impact of increased truck traffic from the joint base. First, our analysis did not include the proposed shift in truck traffic to the Firth Sterling Gate, which will not only impact Firth Sterling Avenue in general, but its intersection with South Capitol Street. We didn't factor in increased visitor traffic at the Firth Sterling Gate, so it's not only truck traffic, it's visitor traffic. And third, our analysis anticipated completion of the Frederick Douglass Bridge in the proposed realignment and related improvements by 2030. So, we ask the commission to require the Navy to analyze the specific impacts on the transportation network serving the joint base, especially the intersections along Firth Sterling Avenue, that will be created by shifting the truck screening facility to the Firth Sterling Gate and to propose mitigation measures. We also suggest that the commission request specific estimates of the visitor trips that will be redirected and their impact on the levels of service of intersections along Firth Sterling Avenue. The master plan for the joint base does not accommodate the long-proposed realignment of the Frederick Douglass Bridge, as was noted by Mr. Wile. Not only does this deficiency impact the transportation network, but it precludes a potential solution to the truck traffic issue that I just described. The extensive transportation analysis that has been done for St. Elizabeth's shows that, notwithstanding the mitigations that will be made in support of our project and others, traffic in the immediate vicinity of the joint base will generally get worse in the future because of increased overall demand. And as I mentioned above, the analysis that leads to that conclusion takes into consideration that the Frederick Douglass Bridge and related improvements have been completed. So, at a minimum, if the joint base will not accommodate the realignment of the bridge, they should be required to analyze how much worse the transportation network will be without those improvements. The District Department of Transportation has been in discussions for years about the realignment of the bridge and the impact on the joint base. As a part of the bridge realignment and to mitigate impacts to the joint base, DDOT has proposed to create a separate truck access from the highway network at the north end of the joint base. This would be separate from the Firth Sterling Gate. This access point has at least three benefits. It supports a truck access at the north end of the base, which is what they want. It separates the truck traffic from the other traffic accessing the north gate, like the pedestrians who will be using the streetcar, and it will eliminate the requirement for joint base-related truck traffic to use Firth Sterling Avenue. This alternative truck access is neither discussed nor analyzed in the master plan. So, we ask the commission to require the Navy to analyze the impacts on the transportation network that will result if the Frederick Douglass Bridge is not reconstructed according to the proposed realignment. Further, we ask you to require the Navy to analyze the alternative truck access proposed by DDOT as part of the bridge realignment and explain why using the Firth Sterling Gate is a superior approach. As I mentioned above, the transportation analysis for St. Elizabeth's shows that the network in the vicinity of the joint base will be increasingly burdened over time. In peak periods, a consequential part of that burden will be related to traffic coming to and from the joint base. The master plan states that because there will be no increase...
Please finish.
Thank you. ...in the number of parking spaces, an expansion in the number of employees at the base by as much as 25% will not generate any additional traffic. A sophisticated traffic analysis is not required to show that this statement is not correct. The master plan indicates that there is substantial underutilization of parking spaces in certain locations on the joint base at present. In addition, the intent to relocate those parking areas over time into more convenient locations is in order to facilitate increasing the utilization rate. Simple math would indicate that the same number of parking spaces with a higher utilization rate equals more cars, even without increasing the number of employees. The commission knows that DHS has committed to achieving the 1 to 4 parking ratio required for St. Elizabeth's, and we know that an aggressive TMP will be required to achieve that ratio. But we recognize that in a location like St. Elizabeth's or the joint base, more parking begets more traffic. There is no reason that the joint base cannot achieve the recommended parking ratio of 1 to 4 and actually reduce traffic to the joint base. We ask the commission to require the Navy to analyze the impact of the increased traffic from increased utilization of existing parking and to propose mitigation measures. Further, we ask the commission to require the joint base to explain why they cannot achieve the 1 to 4 parking ratio standard that will be achieved at St. Elizabeth's, which is also in the EDR. The concerns that we've expressed today about the insufficiency of the transportation analysis offered in support of the joint base master plan stem from the fact that we, in conjunction with GSA, have analyzed the transportation network in this area. Our analysis, all of which has been shared with staff from the joint base, does not support the conclusions drawn by the Navy regarding the impacts from the location of the truck screening facility at the Firth Sterling Gate, the lack of accommodation of the realignment of the Frederick Douglass Bridge, and the cumulative impacts to the network of increased traffic to the base. We hope the commission shares our concerns and will require adequate analysis and mitigation before allowing the master plan to be finalized. We have offered, and we continue to offer, to collaborate with the Navy in their transportation planning efforts, and we think that the NCPC staff recommendation for a joint effort on coordinated TMP strategies, not a joint plan, would be beneficial. So, the bottom line for us is, we want St. Elizabeth's to be a success, and we think some of the issues raised by the joint base master plan will needlessly handicap us in achieving a success at St. Elizabeth's. So, I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the additional time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mitten, very much. Yes, sir.
My question is, given the presentation by the staff, the one comment you had particular concern was with plan versus strategy. Is that... are there more things you feel that would be needed to make this help address some of the concerns you've raised in terms of our recommendation?
No, I think all of the recommendations that are in the EDR are good. We endorse those, and we tried to supplement those...
Yep.
...and just wanted to perhaps modify the one that would suggest that there be a joint transportation management plan between St. Elizabeth's and the joint base.
To a plan and/strategy, in other words.
Well, we don't want a joint plan. We're happy to implement strategies jointly.
Okay. So, strategy, okay.
Yes.
For the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I... this is some history. First of all, Bowling Air Force Base has been a very good neighbor to us in Anacostia for years, and the Navy's been a part of that. This whole movement of Homeland Security is very important to our community, and we will hope it will work for us, even though we know there are many, many concerns and questions now. About a year ago, this issue was brought before us, at least a year ago, this new presence on Bowling Air Force Base and the Navy's takeover. At that time, I requested informally that they come to our little community meeting, Anacostia Coordinating Council, which is involved in a lot of stuff in Anacostia. We have some roles, and they were not willing to show. Now, I'm not mad about that, you know? Some people don't want to come to the dance, okay? It's okay. But now, I'm beginning to hear more about things that just make me say, what is going on here? We have a good neighbor. We have good neighbors. Homeland Security has done so many things to try to accommodate, even with the complexity of what they're doing. And now, we got a federal player coming in from a neighborhood that they've been good citizens in, and we don't... we can't talk. We don't seem to be talking, you know, even at their level. Lieutenant Colonel's present. Is he... is it time to bring him forward and have him, you know...
Sure.
Share with us.
Lieutenant Colonel McClure?
Yes.
Yes, welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for the opportunity to come and...
Absolutely.
...address your questions and clarify what I believe are some misconceptions about our plan and what it intends to do.
Be happy to hear from you.
Yes. You're Air Force, though, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay. Just like... I'm a former academy class of '67.
Excellent.
I did some time there, so I know about...
Although I don't look like it. I'm also the Navy Public Works Officer for Joint Base Anacostia.
So, you're in a purple suit for the moment. Looks kind of purple. My vision is kind of... it's purple. it's purple. Okay, I'm gonna yield on that, but let me... please, I wanna... I'm curious.
We'd be happy to hear any general comments you may have in response to what you've heard thus far, and then we can get into specific questions, but...
Thank you.
Yes.
One of our goals of the plan was to get some help from our planning firm to identify what portions of the base should be developed if there is new mission assignments or additional growth. And that's really where that 5,000-person growth came from, is sort of to box in and define the framework of where we would place new missions should those arise. Oftentimes, world events create changes quickly, and we have to react very fast to bring on new missions. There's often not time to do that planning. So we wanted the framework to show general heights of buildings, where they would go, what types of facilities. So it's important for me to note for the group that there is not planned growth of 5,000 people. That's purely hypothetical, and the plan was intended to determine where best to put future growth if it should occur. So the joint base master plan, like many you've seen, is not a developmental plan to increase or grow the size of the base. The base has been there since 1917. We're now in an equal... we're kind of a dynamic equilibrium without real growth or real shrinkage, although we do like to think forward and create plans in a contingency that we do have additional folks coming on base. So I think that created a lot of concern with the readers of the plan, and many people have seemed to interpret that as joint base is growing by 5,000 people. That's not the case.
But what about the discussion about talking and collaborating, meeting with community groups?
I was surprised by that, because we've had a series of meetings with a lot of community groups, including the DHS staff, and held public comment meetings, which were the middle of September this past year.
Yeah, Homeland Security said to share with us that there may be more cooperation. Discussion might be needed, and is that...
I certainly agree that cooperation is in order, because we have to cooperate to mitigate the impact of all the new traffic coming to our area. But a lot of coordination is taking place, and we're very open to continue to increase coordination. That's only positive. I'd also like to point out that a lot of the concern with our north gate is probably moot at this point. When this plan was complete, the recommendation from our firm was that it's a good idea for base traffic to move the truck traffic to the north. We're trying to improve two conditions. One condition is that currently truck traffic is mixed with people commuting to work, and at times of heightened security, traffic tends to back up on the 295, which is quite dangerous, and that's not going to improve any when we have the additional traffic coming to our area. The other concern we wanted to solve was that most of our destinations for our truck traffic are in the north part of the base, the industrial... light industrial portions of the base and our retail outlets. Now, when traffic comes on the south gate, they transit through our residential neighborhoods through a large portion of the base to get to their destinations. Entry point on the north part of the base avoids that altogether. And I'm glad to hear DHS likes the plan of the north gate. We followed the recommendations in the joint plan, created that plan cooperatively with DDOT, and that's now our course of action. Our planning firm collected data from DHS and the GSA EIS study for St. Elizabeth's. Our planning firm agrees that with that increased traffic, intersections outside Firth Sterling will in fact fail, and our strategy is to avoid that with our truck traffic. I should also point out the truck traffic is fairly minor in comparison with the other traffic coming to the base. Throughout the rush hour period, it's only about 70 vehicles, and 13% of those are true trucks, tractor-trailer. So it's pretty minimal impact, and the design, in conjunction meshed with the new bridge, would have a road come off the proposed traffic circle sufficient for any queuing space.
I know many years ago, there was an entrance to the Navy part of the base, which is at that end, where you could enter from the... right by the river, there was an entrance there, and it wasn't connected to Firth Sterling. Is that... is that a possible...
That's the north gate we're talking about. The gate still exists.
Yeah, I know the north... yeah, well, okay. I think I know that north gate at Firth Sterling, right?
No, no, sir. Firth Sterling is the gate on the north part of the base that we're all familiar with because it comes off of Firth Sterling Gate. There's another north gate that lines up with the Park Service Road essentially that goes into Anacostia Park.
Okay.
And that's the road that we're talking about, the entrance that we're talking about that Ms. Bitten alluded to. But that design would be meshed with the bridge, so that as traffic approached, there would be an inspection station on land, hopefully that comes to us in some sort of a land swap. Trucks would be inspected before passing under the bridge and then go through a visitor center sort of process once onto the base.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna yield, but I'm just sensing there's both miscommunication and maybe a lack of communication, and I don't understand why neighbors, you guys, you know, can't talk to each other and make sure we get together and have a strategy that works for everybody, and the community will benefit from it totally. But I yield, Mr. Chair, at this time.
Let me just clarify. You are planning for the possibility of 5,000 additional employees, but you're really not planning on having 5,000 additional employees.
It's a contingency plan, a what-if scenario, but there is no basing decision, no mission decision, that brings 5,000 people to us. So I think one course of action to eliminate the confusion might be to keep our plan limited to the known growth, which is taking place now. Actually, that's finishing, and it's a result of the BRAC 2005 law. We have no intention of growing the base. We do want to improve commuter traffic. So the base itself is in dynamic equilibrium. We're replacing buildings at their end of the useful life. We're more efficiently using space for demolishing some facilities, and then we'd like to pursue strategies in conjunction with Homeland Security, with DDOT and other agencies to improve commuter options and to reduce the single occupancy vehicles on base.
So you have no intention of growing the base, but you're planning for it in case it happens?
Yes.
And by submitting that in the master plan, then we therefore must do certain things and include certain calculations. I mean, that's part of the master planning process, irregardless of you're not intending it, but you're planning for it in case it does happen.
I think there's probably two courses of action. One would be to take that hypothetical 5,000 people, spend tax dollars, do a detailed analysis on the traffic for what that would impact. Maybe another course of action is to reduce the scope of our plan to only encompass the planned growth and not undergo the analysis for something until it actually happens.
Mr. May?
Yeah, I mean, your comments raise a whole bunch of questions. So first, at one point, you suggested that the plan could be modified to limit it to the known growth. What is that growth level? If 5,000 is the max, what's the known growth?
That known growth is listed in the plan as about 1,500 folks.
1,500?
Yes. And most of those efforts have...
Sorry. And do you... so do you have, like, kind of two phases of the plan? One is for the known growth, and then there's the, you know, the what-if scenario that brings it all the way up to 5,000? Is it... I mean, is there something that we should be focusing on? Because even at 1,500, we need to understand what the impacts are of that number of people, that number of cars, if they're driving, whatever.
Yes, and one of the, I guess, the most significant aspect or driver for the growth is the NISM facility construction. It has already gone through the approval process, EA process through NEPA, and also approval through the NCPC.
Right, I recall...
So there's no additional expansion beyond the projects that have already been approved and underway.
Okay, so all that's already been covered?
The people have moved to the base.
The 1,500 has already been covered?
Yes, the people have not moved to the base yet, but those projects have been addressed.
Okay, and so now, let's talk about the gate, the north gate versus the Firth Sterling Gate. I think the Park Service in the past has had some concerns about the north gate, so if it's going to be phased in at some point, the trigger for that is the reconstruction of the bridge or the transfer of Popular Point to the district? I mean, what would trigger that, the creation of that new gate and processing facility?
It could only happen after the bridge is constructed and after we seek and gain funding for the development to create the inspection stations and all the facilities that support it. And in our meetings to develop this concept, we've been participating with DDOT as well as the DC Office of Planning, and that is tied in with the development at Popular Point and the plans for that space.
Right, okay. So that if it were, at the time when it's implemented, it would not trigger the flow of your traffic along Anacostia Drive through the park?
No, sir. It would come off of the new traffic circle proposed as a part of the bridge if that option is selected, and I would not anticipate that sort of a change until after 2014. So we're talking about a change somewhat down the future.
You wouldn't anticipate that change? In other words, that work actually happening as opposed to that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
In terms of the plan, is that what you're describing here with the north gate, is that what was submitted to NCPC for their review, for the staff review?
This plan has an assessment of using Firth Sterling Gate.
Right.
And the plan supports or confirms the analysis from DHS that those intersections right off Firth Sterling Gate will fail once the new traffic comes, and it recommends that we find a solution while partnering with DDOT to mitigate that concern, and that's exactly what we've done.
Okay, so... and is that what you evaluated, was the north gate or was it the Firth Sterling?
The Firth Sterling Gate.
The Firth Sterling.
Okay, so it's changed subsequent to the submission?
It has.
Okay.
You know, the drawings on the plan show Firth Sterling Gate, but the recommendation on the plan indicates that choosing Firth Sterling Gate without some other solution is not recommended. So we followed the recommendations of the plan and created a new solution to use the north gate.
All right.
Where's the north gate on this map, please?
It's up there, right?
This shows a potential future location, but the north gate is at the bottom, bottom right-hand tip.
I thought that was...
Slightly in the property line. The fence line is somewhat in the property line, a couple hundred feet.
All right.
That's the Firth Sterling.
I understand. I thought it was...
You're not in a microphone. I think you need to be on a microphone when you're speaking, so...
Yeah, I have...
All right. I don't have any further questions, but it's interesting seeing this presentation after the last one, because this one seems a little bit more incomplete than the last one.
This is not intended to address growth, so that's a big difference in the purpose of the plans.
Yeah, I understand that, and that wasn't...
I certainly agree.
Not clear to me, I'm not sure, you know, until you said that, but I don't... that's not the biggest issue, because even if it is an anticipated sort of maximum growth, you're essentially asking for a blessing on that anticipated maximum growth, and that's not something you can do without understanding what the full impacts are. And I think that, you know, it's clear from the staff report that what has been evaluated is not really adequate to make a good judgment on that at this point, so...
I would not ask for or seek permission for unconstrained growth or growth of some arbitrary number, but if there's a new future basing decision, following that would be a proposed NEPA process with an EIS and approaching this panel again with the construction drawing. So there's other... it would be other steps before we build, for sure.
Okay, so you're proposing essentially retracting this as a master plan, redefining it to describe essentially what's already been approved, and then putting off a future master plan anticipating this growth due to other missions at some point in the future?
Not at all, not at all.
Okay, then explain to me.
The staff panel has proposed changes to the plan that I think are constructive, so anticipate a revision cycle, and we would use this plan or alter this plan to reflect the changes that have taken place with our thought process with the north gate, and we would also... would limit the scope to reflect plan development, not hypothetical or potential development, which would simplify it, I think, for all.
Okay.
At such time, if there is a new mission or a new basing decision, we'll address that growth with a plan at the time that it occurs, if it ever does occur.
Well, I don't want to suggest that you're... that the idea of planning for this potential future growth is not a smart thing to be doing, because we've experienced other circumstances and other bases, frankly, where the... where the, you know, the mission gets assigned and there isn't enough time to do the planning. And so the plan follows, excuse me, follows the decisions that have been made and doesn't work out very well. So I mean, I think you're wise to plan into the future, whether it's 5,000 additional personnel or something less, but I wouldn't necessarily say that you need to retract it all the way back to what you already have in the pipeline. That's sort of a master plan as an as-built document. It's not the right way to plan, so...
Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My firm, the Onyx Group, is currently working on a task order at JBAB, not with a master plan, but to avoid any appearance of, you know, conflict of interest. I will recuse myself from this item.
Yes, sir. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be sure that we're gonna have a conversation between you and Homeland Security that's meaningful.
Absolutely. In fact, we've had many, and we have frequent periodic meetings with Homeland Security's Transportation Coordinator, and we'd like to continue those. In fact, we're inviting him over now for weekly discussions because we think that increased communication is in order.
Could I just ask Homeland Security if they would mind? Is that happening? I'm not trying to doubt the Colonel, I believe him, but is that progress, is that making? Just want to be sure. The community's in the middle. It's like, you know, two elephants fight, only the grass dies, right? We're the community, we're the grass.
Good afternoon. I'm Christopher Mills. I'm the Assistant Director for Headquarters Consolidation. I'm also the St. Elizabeth's Program Manager. Just to clarify, the first we found out about the JBAB master plan was from NCPC staff February of 2010, when the Navy facility was coming before the Commission for Action. There was no interaction between Bowlin Navy and us prior to that. Once we found out about it, we asked for a meeting to understand what was going on. From that meeting, we expressed some concerns with the traffic and the coordination. Following that meeting, we... they said they would go back and look at it, we'd get back with us. We didn't hear anything for the next several months. So I followed up in April of 2010, and then we met in July of 2010, again, to express, what are you doing, and how's that Firth Sterling transportation issue coming along? There were no changes, so GSA agreed to share our transportation analysis to further, you know, underscore our concerns. And that's really the last we heard from them, until this last week, I think.
Well, Chris, to be fair, I wouldn't... Kevin would talk. Okay. That's right. Not true.
So there's been no official... I mean, there's been no consultation. We never received a copy of the master plan. We were never invited to any public meetings on the master plan. We want to... and it gives me no great pleasure to say this before this committee, because we want to cooperate with our federal neighbors, and we need to cooperate. And for us to be successful, it's only going to happen if we're consistent in our approaches. So we can't be doing one thing on one side of 295 and having JBAB do something else on the other side of 295. We're all federal employees. We need to have consistent policies and coordinated efforts. So we welcome that they're willing to talk. We need to have a coordinated planning effort. It needs to be meaningful for us, for both Bowlin's interests and for our interests.
Mr. Chairman, I'm satisfied. I just want to be sure that they do it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll remind the Commission, and this is a preface to a question, Colonel. Unusually, despite the geography of JBAB, this commission is advisory. That being the case, Colonel, can you comment specifically on your intentions regarding the commission's recommendations in the EDR, the items in the EDR?
Yes, I'm familiar with that designation as advisory, but nonetheless, it's in everyone's best interest for us to incorporate comments and constructive changes, and there's many of those in the comments. So I would very much like to meet with the commission staff to fully understand the comments and discuss about how we're going to implement those in the next iteration of the plan.
We welcome that. Thank you very much.
And we have had extensive meetings. I think the characterization is just not correct of the meetings and the offers to share the plan. In fact, we had a public comment session as a part of the EA on the 15th of September, invited DHS and others. They did not participate. So there is a communication breakdown. I don't know if it's between us and DHS or internal, but I think we can all agree to rectify that and do better in the future.
I'll speak for everyone and say, yes, we all agree that there shall be much better communication. So, yes, sir. Other questions or comments from commission members? Mr. Provincia?
I have a question. I think the precedent of one agency coming in and asking the NCPC to require another agency to withdraw their master plan, I think, is unprecedented, and some might even characterize that as extreme. I would characterize it as extreme, since I carefully chose that word. I'm trying to figure out what kind of a clear signal, and what I'm hearing is mixed signals. The chairman commented earlier about being appreciative on the NAC project of seeing a master plan, a draft master plan submitted, and now somebody submits a master plan and we just beat the hell out of them for submitting a master plan. What were you thinking at the time you submitted a draft master plan? Is the message that I'm getting that's coming across loud and clear. Why are you not... across loud and clear. Why are you not planning for the potential future possibility of a, perhaps a realignment of the Douglas Bridge, et cetera, et cetera? Why are you doing something innovative that presents a flexible master plan, that acknowledges known growth and then plans for future unknown contingencies? What are you possibly thinking? This is a, I'm trying to paraphrase and to characterize some of the instructions that I'm seeing issued. I think there's many positive things in the plans, and those were covered in the presentation by staff. The sensitivity to the heights, to the view sheds, the proposed heights of the buildings, these were all emphasized, the zoning, the preservation of the historic elements, zones of JBAB, the landscaping that'll promote and sustain those historical elements. Sustainability was highlighted, the waterfront, Greenway, and on and on and on. There's so many, many more positive things that are elements of the plan. There's some pretty strong language about the parking ratios. How come the plan doesn't immediately take care of the parking ratios? I think that's, is probably an onerous requirement. Clearly, I think there's a commitment on the behalf of the JBAB leadership to, in the future plans, the future iterations, achieve that parking ratio. The plan improves the parking ratios almost 50%. I think we should acknowledge and be appreciative of that. The requirement to cooperate and collaborate with the neighbors, I think, is a reasonable one. It looks like the JBAB staff has tried repeatedly to do that. When it didn't work in a public forum, they've been having offline one-on-one meetings, which sometimes can be more productive than trying to have a discourse in a public forum, so applaud the JBAB leadership for those efforts. I think we're headed in the right direction. I think amongst all the comments, I think there are some kernels of good advice, and would hope, and I'm confident, that the JBAB staff will take those on board. I think it should be clarified, too, that NAVFAC is the Design, Construction, and Planning Agent, and has a good reputation, particularly in the last year or so, of working more closely with DDOT and with the DC Office of Planning, and I think there's a commitment to continue to improve those relationships in that collaboration, so. Thank you, sir.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the EDR?
I'd make a motion that the Commission provides the comments as listed in the EDR and as supplemented by Homeland Security.
It's been moved and seconded that the EDR approved, noting the other comments submitted by DHS. Further discussion?
I just wanted to be able to support Department of Homeland Security today, loudly, and just, I know the irony, too, of wishing that some of the deficiencies pointed out in the TNP had just been pointed out in the previous one. That's all I really was trying to get at.
Clarify what the amended motion is. Is this specifically to insert every paragraph that's in italicized font, requiring the Navy to do this and do that, and analyze the impacts and so forth? Is that what the motion is?
Yes, I believe there are three requests made directly of the Commission, and I propose to include them all, all three.
Well, should we take, that as a separate amendment to the motion?
No, my motion was both the comments of the EDR and the comments of the Homeland Security, is one motion.
I believe Colonel McClure, speaking on behalf of the JBAB leadership, agreed to all of these conditions.
Okay, so you're okay with that then, Mr. Provincia?
No, sir. I'm not okay with amending the EDR to include these. I think that we've already gotten commitment that the leadership is willing to do so without being formally instructed and required to do so.
The Chair would wonder if we should take the second, perhaps include your, have yours as an amendment to the EDR. Ms. Steingass, sir?
Is the Commission limited to only moving the EDR or moving the EDR with amendments? I mean, I would like it to be one motion. I think it's more sufficient.
The language in the letter says "require" also, and we can't require, it's advisory.
I would suggest, on that point, that each of these, each of the italicized paragraphs, you could take out that first part of "we ask the Commission to require the Navy." They could all be additional information that is being requested in the TNP on page two. The additional things that would be requested at the top, that should be part of, on page two, it says, of the EDR, it says, "Request the following additional information," and it says, "A transportation management program with the following additional information." That, each of these, each of these italicized paragraphs asks for additional information. The first one says, "An analysis of the specific impacts on the transportation network serving the joint base, specific estimates of the visitors' trips that will be redirected and their impact on the levels of service of intersections along First Sterling, an analysis of the impacts." So if you just take out the "we ask the Commission to require the Navy" two language and change "analyze" to "an analysis" in each of these paragraphs, I think they will all fit into the types of additional information that would fit into that paragraph of the EDR for the TNP.
I would accept that as a friendly.
Suggestion.
Friendly suggestion.
Okay.
Let Deborah try to sort that.
So just to be sure.
Debbie doesn't have a copy of the letter, so you really have to, again, copies made, also.
What's being referenced is in Ms. Steingass's comments that she passed out, not the previous letter.
Ms. Mittens's comments.
Ms. Mittens, excuse me, Ms. Mittens's comments. So the motion, Ms. Young, is to pass, to approve the EDR and also include the items in italicized language, but striking from each one, the part about "we the Commission require," and just picking up the action. That's the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any brief further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
One no. One no and one abstention. Mr. Hart abstains. Thank you very much, and we do appreciate you submitting a master plan. We look forward to working with you. Thank you very much, truly. The Commission will continue on. Item, Agenda Item 5C is the Post Exchange Shopping Center at Fort Belvoir North Post, and we have still with us Mr. Wile. Mr. Wile?
Good afternoon again. This is a project resubmission for Project, the Commission reviewed last month's meeting, for the Post Exchange Shopping Center located at Fort Belvoir, Virginia. It's being resubmitted by the United States Department of the Army for final site and building plan review. And again, this is in follow-up to the Commission's review of the preliminary design at the April Commission meeting. So again, the project site is located on the north post portion of Fort Belvoir, located just to the northwest of the existing PX and commissary buildings, and the proposed design has not changed at all. It's still a 263,000-square-foot shopping center. Staff notes that a majority of the interior space will be utilized by the APHEES Post Exchange. And just to recap the Commission action from last month's meeting, the Commission disagreed with staff's recommendation for approval of the project, disapproved the preliminary site and building plans for the new Post Exchange Shopping Center due to concerns with its site plan and removal of 4,700 trees, and the Commission required the Army to submit an updated master plan that includes a reforestation plan, and noted that the Fort Belvoir master plan was last approved in 1993, and that the Commission may find it difficult to approve any future proposals until the submission of an updated master plan. So pursuant to last month's Commission action, the Army reviewed the action and reached a determination that it disagreed with the Commission action, so therefore, that's why this project is being resubmitted for final design review pursuant to Section 5 of the National Capitol Planning Act. Once the Army staff, the Army communicated that it disagreed with the Commission action, staff crafted several guidance questions based on review of the Commission transcripts from last month's meeting. Staff made it clear to the Army that responding to staff's questions was optional. At the end of the day, the Army could craft any sort of response that it deemed appropriate to try to justify the final design, and these three questions really sum up the staff guidance questions. Number one, could the PX shopping center and North Post Town Center designs change at all? Is there any opportunity at this point to change those? How is the project's tree replacement mitigation determined? And will the master plan update include a reforestation plan component? In general, the Army's response expressed disappointment at the Commission's disapproval of its preliminary design, and also reiterated that, from the Army's perspective, it felt that it did adequately respond to NCPC and Fairfax County's comments to the concept submission that was reviewed at last summer, and basically, I'll go through the, kind of summarize the new responses, the new information in response to the staff questions. Regarding the North Post Town Center, the applicant said that although there is no opportunity to reshape the Post Exchange Shopping Center and commissary at this point, there is opportunity to reshape the remainder of the town center, which is seen here in this red dotted area. And here's the shopping center and the future commissary.
I'm sorry, can you go back to that again?
Sure, absolutely. So we have the proposed shopping center site, the future commissary site, and then this is, this is a historic cemetery, and basically, this whole area within this red dotted line is open for shaping. Right now, this is shown, I believe, with housing. However, the applicant indicated that anything really can, is in play at this point, the roadway network, the uses, so this is really the remainder of what would be the future planned North Post Town Center.
Okay.
The applicant indicated that in response to the current customer base for the current PX use, 96% of the customers travel from off-post to patronize that use, and so, as a result, the future PX shopping center is oriented to allow easy driving access to the site to accommodate this anticipated large off-post population that would be served by the shopping center. Regarding the proposed tree replacement, the applicant indicated that the reason why two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees were selected is they felt that, in their past experience, that size tree afforded the best combination of making a positive impact on the landscape, and it also had a relatively high survival rate compared to other-sized trees, both larger and smaller, and that trees that do not survive will be replaced in kind during the first year per warranty. And lastly, the applicant indicated that a tree reforestation plan will be addressed in the master plan update as requested by the Commission. In conclusion, the staff felt, after reviewing the transcripts from last month's Commission meeting, staff made the determination that really the two key concerns expressed by the Commission was, were the site plans for the town center and the proposed shopping center design, and also the large proposed extent of the tree removal, being 4,700 trees. So as such, it is the Executive Director's recommendation to the Commission to acknowledge receipt of the Army's response to the Commission preliminary action as required by Section 5 of the National Capitol Planning Act, to disprove the final site and building plans for a new Post Exchange Shopping Center at Fort Belvoir, since the proposal's not fully responsive to the Commission's concerns expressed at the preliminary review stage regarding the substantial tree loss resulting from the project and the overall site planning of the Post Exchange and North Post Town Center, and to note that the lack of approved master plans impairs the Commission's ability to ensure the comprehensive planning and orderly development of the National Capitol, and therefore requires the applicant to submit an updated master plan that includes a reforestation plan addressing replacement of trees lost due to construction projects on the post, and noting that the Commission may find it difficult to approve any future proposals until such time as an updated master plan is submitted. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions, and the Army also has representation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wile. This is not a new project. We're very familiar with the issues. Is there discussion, Mr. Hart?
In this recommendation, I'm reading it that the approved master plan that's required here is an installation master plan, not a site development master plan.
That is correct.
Very good.
Further questions or comments, then I would invite a representative from the Army to come and make any comments that they may wish, if at all.
Chris Langrath, I'm the Acting Chief of Facility Planning and the Master Planner at Fort Belvoir, Acting Master Planner. We'd just like to regret, or say that we regret your decision, the Executive Director's recommendation to disapprove. We feel that we have worked with the staff. Previous recommendations for pervious pavement versus structured parking, we did adopt pervious pavement. You know, we have reduced the site footprint as, as much as practical to deal with the off-post, the number of off-post personnel that come to utilize this facility within the National Capitol region. We have expressed to the NCPC staff that we are willing to work with the additional parts of our town center that are not currently developed, but due to grading plans associated with the PX and therefore the commissary and their proximity, there's not a lot of a possibility for us to change those two footprints right now, but Fort Belvoir, as stated previously, will continue to work with this Commission on all future projects, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langrath, very much. Further discussion? Hearing none. Is there a?
Couple of quick questions about the, it looks like the two key issues are, as stated, the tree loss and the site planning. On the issue of the tree loss, can we explore that just a minute? Is it numbers of trees? Is it caliper? Is it the inability of the Belvoir folks to guarantee the survivability of 100% of the trees? It looks like those types of issues are covered by the larger caliper trees that are provided, as well as taking out life insurance on the trees during the warranty period so that these could be replaced. Is it still not adequate as far as either numbers or caliper? Is that, what's the crux of the reservations from staff about the tree?
Well, you know, staff, regarding the tree issue, you know, in response to the large number of trees that the project would remove, staff at last month's meeting proposed the incorporation of a tree reforestation plan.
Right.
To help mitigate some of that tree loss, in addition to the.
And Belvoir is receptive to that, is my understanding.
And they are, they are. However, upon reviewing the transcript from the last Commission meeting, staff interpreted the Commission action to disprove the entire preliminary design as requiring a significant change in the proposed design, such as creating a multistructure use or structured parking, or revisiting the entire town center plan. And at the end of the day, when the staff reviewed the proposed design, which had not changed, basically, we did not feel that anything significant, you know, had been brought to the Commission and to the staff for review, so that's why we are recommending disapproval of the project, of the final design.
On the issue of the future, trying to correct the site planning issues with the future town center, is staff not receptive to Belvoir proposals?
With helping to form the remainder of the town center?
Yes, yes.
Yes, absolutely. We've spoken to the applicant, and we've expressed an interest to really work with them, to collaborate, to help form the remainder of the town center.
What I'm, I'm just trying to clarify whether what I'm, the message from. What I'm, I'm just trying to clarify whether what I'm, the message from staff to Belvoir is, we want it to be fixed, and we want it to be fixed now, and we want it to be fixed in this phase, and we're not really receptive to it, these issues being addressed and complied with and repaired in the, in future phases?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I guess, at the end of the day, you know, we were left to interpret, based on review of the transcripts and the Commission action, that the Commission sought something dramatic, such as revisiting again the entire town center, or dramatically improving the, modifying the design of the shopping center. And, you know, it was staff judgment that what was proposed, and the fact that the design did not change, did not significantly do that.
All right, I understand. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Mr. Hart?
I was not here for the last meeting, so I wasn't party to a lot of the discussion. It looks to me like this plan was submitted, and it's a satellite out there someplace, doesn't really have much relationship to any context. Therefore, the recommendation that this really should flow out of an installation master plan, I think, is well-founded. I mean, while I wasn't able to say anything about JBAB, we flogged those guys for looking farther ahead than their immediate needs. And I think that, in this case, with BRAC, here's a base that saw an enormous amount of growth, acknowledged that there's no master plan for it. So really, our role as National Planning Commission really should be what we're doing here, pushing for a master plan that accommodates known and even unknown potential growth in a way that makes the most sense. The little plan that I saw that called this a town center, I think, is not. It's not a town center. Town center implies a certain amount of density and proximity and pedestrian accommodation. So I think as the Army goes forward with a master plan, it really needs to look at integrating known, as well as potential future growth requirements in that plan in order to put the pieces together in a logical way. Enough said.
Was there a motion? Is there a motion on the EDR as written?
I'll move the EDR.
It's been moved and seconded. Sensing no further discussion, all in favor of the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Two noes, Mr. Proventia and Mr. Dennis. And with that, that's the last item on our agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the whole? Hearing none, thank you for your work today. We are adjourned.